Committee meeting. We have a full agenda today, starting with the recognition of retirees, followed by visitors, followed by the approval of minutes, followed by the Foxborough High School overnight travel, the music department trip to Australia in July of 2019. If it's alright with everyone else, we're gonna move the socio-emotional learning update, the Boomerang Project student transition programs, WE, WEB, and Link Crew to right after that, followed by the ELA textbook adoption, the wellness committee update, the 2018-2019 Foxborough High School student handbook revisions, followed by preventing bias and discrimination program review with Dr. Berdos, Dr. Mello, and committee members, followed by the 2017 to 2020 strategic plan, report on progress by Dr. Berdos, followed then by the superintendent's evaluation, the continued discussion, followed then by the service and maintenance bids by Mr. Bill Yuckner, followed by the fiscal year 18 budget update by Mr. Bill Yuckner, followed by the acceptance of donations, Foxborough High School athletics, and then finally, the other matters. We'll start with the recognition of retirees.
First, would like to say that this is a really exciting time of year. As the year comes to a close, we get to recognize some really special individuals. And so, this is a time when, if you're able to make it, it gives a chance for school committees sometimes to put a face with a name, but with the number of years of service that we have by those of you sitting in the audience that were able to make it with us here this evening, I'm sure that they've been able to put the face with the name because overall, we had 222 years of service by all of our retirees. So, I will hand it over to you so you can, to recognize, and it's just really super exciting.
Okay. Our first retiree is Colleen Barrett, who has 22 years of service, the first grade teacher at the Taylor. Our second retiree is Lorraine Capone, 24 years as a speech and language teacher throughout the district of Foxborough. Our next retiree is Gary Good, 25 years as a custodian at Foxborough High School. Our next retiree is Celeste Kane, 22 years as a bus driver for the Foxborough district. Our next one is Cynthia Karalekis, 20 years as a special education teacher at Foxborough High School. Our next is Gregory McManus, 36 years as a wellness phys ed teacher at the Borough School. Our next is Eleanor Petrovic, 30 years as a wellness phys ed teacher at Foxborough High School. Our next one is Patricia Ruba, 24 years as a preschool educational assistant at the Borough. And then, our final one is Frances Stillwell, she has 19 years as a kindergarten educational assistant at the Borough School.
So, we're going to have you come up to at least be able to shake your hands. We have a little gift for you as well. All of our retirees, these are retirees, some of you retired back in the fall or even last June, so it's anyone who's retired in the last year, but we have a number of you that are retiring at the end of June, so Friday's your last day. So, I know that that's very emotional too, but really excited for you and all that you've done for our students in Foxborough, whether it's in the buildings, whether it's on buses or in the classrooms. I think that the number of years here from all of you is really amazing with your dedication to our students in Foxborough, and we could not be more fortunate, so thank you.
Come up, come around, and then you can end with me.
Nobody wants to be first.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Oh, that's okay.
Congratulations.
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 Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Have a great time.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And your other gift from us is that you do not have to stay through the whole school committee.
Maybe the best gift.
Thank you again, and have a wonderful last week if you are still with us right now.
Thank you all, thank you. Next on our agenda is, do we have any visitors that would like to be heard? Seeing none, we're gonna move to the approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes. Do you have something?
Nope. Which one would you like to do first?
We'll start with the regular meetings. Does anyone have anything they'd like to?
I don't have any additional changes.
Neither do I.
I'll move that we accept or approve the meeting minutes from June, regular meeting minutes from June 4th, 2018.
I'll second that. All those in favor? Three, zero. Now, moving on to the executive session meeting, session meetings from June 4th, 2018. Is there anything we'd like to change?
I have nothing.
Same.
I've moved that we accept the executive meeting minutes from June 4th, 2018.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor? Three, zero.
I'll move to release the executive session meeting minutes from June 4th, 2018, now that they've been approved.
Second.
All those in favor? Three, zero. We're now going to move to the Foxborough High School overnight travel, the music department trip to Australia, July 2019, and update from Ms. Diana Myers-Pacla and Ms. Kami Tadaldi.
Hello.
Hello.
So, I know this is not on the agenda, but I had to show you. We did a collaboration with the Senior Inc.
Oh, that's awesome.
We'll show you all. That's their AP, like graphic design program, and they function as a business, and this is the new Foxborough Music Department logo.
Did somebody do that at the street painting?
They did.
I saw it there.
We had it before that.
Yes.
And they were so professional, and the students really just ran this like a solid professional business.
They're amazing.
So, it's a big shout out to Mrs. Arkacha and the art department and all those students. So, hopefully, you'll start seeing this around town. It's cool.
Very cool.
It is.
Had to show you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. I just think it's cool, and I think it's cool when we get to work with other departments and do that kinda stuff, so anyway.
Thanks for sharing.
Of course.
That's awesome.
That's great.
So, since we last met, I had a meeting with potential students in the vocal jazz ensemble, jazz ensemble and chamber orchestra that would potentially be traveling with us. Thank you. I didn't bring clips on. And we had that meeting two weeks ago, and I had approximately 75 students and parents in attendance, and just overall, the reception was very positive. Students and parents seemed very excited about the opportunity. I'm very grateful that we were willing to put this together, and grateful that this school committee was considering this as an option for us, and there certainly was interest. So, and you know, many parents approached me after saying like, you know, we wanna get fundraising on this, we wanna get going, we'd love to do that, and I said, well, we're not gonna do anything until we have a formal approval from the school committee, and they recognized that, but the excitement and the drive is there, and sort of the understanding that we would need to move on fundraising for this now is sort of the big push at this point. So, I'm just looking for your approval to move this trip forward, if, after you have any questions.
Kami, you wanna give just a little bit of background in case people are not aware from the first meeting of what this trip entails?
Sure. So, since back earlier this year, the Hale School from Perth, Australia came and visited us, and we've, they've been, this would be their third visit with us, their staff came over first, and we've hosted their students twice, and every time they've come, they've invited us and said, we'd love for your music department to come over and visit us, and we'd love to host you at our school, and we've been like, well, we'll look into it, we'll look into it, and this time, I said, okay, I'm really gonna look into it this time. And I've put together a proposal that will start with us traveling to Sydney, and this would be July, approximately July 16th of 2019 to July 29th slash 30th, depending on plane landings, over July, and then we do Sydney. The first half of our trip would be in Sydney, which would be strictly cultural sightseeing, doing all of the things that you would wanna do as much as we can while we're in Sydney, and throwing in some musical performances, things like that, and then making our way over to Perth, and then actually doing homestays and staying with the students at the Hale School and getting, and having our students getting a chance to go to school in Australia and experience the culture, and just get that exchange feel and have an opportunity really just to see the world, and also experience music with them, and see that music is a language that is, you know, it's united, and we can live literally across the world from each other and get together with our instruments and be able to play and have an instant bond, so that's the background on that.
Anyone have any questions?
Any questions for me on that?
So, we need to vote tonight on this, right?
We need to.
In order for them to begin the fundraising, so I don't know if there were any where you had a great turnout at your parent meeting, if there were any particular questions that were raised that stand out for you that might be important to bring up in case there might be questions that were being thought of here?
I mean, the cost, you know, people were like, well, how much is it gonna cost? And I can't give a definitive answer right now because of, we can't buy plane tickets yet, but somewhere in the ballpark of 5,000 to 5,500, depending on flight prices and that kinda fluctuation with over about a year out. So, the price was, you know, a question, but kind of when I put it in perspective and said, we need to raise this, you know, sort of large total if we're going to be doing this, you know, I said, we're gonna fundraise together as a team, you know, if we do this, we want, we wanna make sure it's equal and, you know, spread evenly across the board. And that was it, and then, trying to think if there were any other questions that we're pressing, nothing that comes to my mind at the moment, just other than, like, we'll just run. I was like, I'm not really sure, it depends on, on the, oh, someone asked minimum travel. In order for this to run, I do need 20 students to participate, and that would be 20 students and three adults. Oh, yeah, and then they asked if they could come as chaperones. That was the other question.
I was gonna ask if anyone.
I've gotten that, and I go, but you have to work, and people go, oh, never mind. But, yep, so right now, it would be 20 students and three adults, and then I also had it priced out, if we have 35 students going, and if we have approximately all 50, allowing for other chaperones to be added in as, as the student travel numbers increase. So, that was the other question we had.
Yeah, I, I think it's great. I would've been shocked if you didn't have tremendous excitement and interest from the parent group, knowing most of them as I do. I think it's wonderful. I do, I do, I know I said it before, and I know you'll do your due diligence on, you know, the communications and what needs to be done being that far away from home as far as, you know, if somebody were to get sick or need medical attention, I mean, it's not like mom and dad can hop on a plane, even Europe is only a five hour flight, this one's a little bit further away, so I know all that's gonna fall into place and be looked at really carefully. I have no problem voting tonight to approve this trip.
I'll entertain a motion.
I will, I will make a motion that we approve the music department trip to Australia in July 2019.
I would second that.
All those in support? Three, zero.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Happy fundraising.
Happy, I was about to say, happy fundraising. That's the big question, but I didn't wanna make any more of that.
Thank you so much.
Exactly. I agree. Cause like, I'm gonna just clear that, I don't wanna talk about the fundraising.
Words benefit concert coming to my mind.
Oh, man, yeah. That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Before we move to our next one, next agenda item, Ms. Weiss and Ms. Lord were unable to attend tonight's meeting, both are out of state, so now, moving on to our next agenda item, it's going to be the socio-emotional learning update, the Boomerang Project student transition programs, WEB and Link Crew, Dr. Berdos, Dr. Einsel, Ms. Sue Abrams, Ms. Karen Frazier, Ms. Lauren Bailey, Ms. Diana Myers-Pacla, Ms. Pam Anderson, and Ms. Kaitlyn Adamakis.
So, as they're moving their way up to the guest table, what I'd like to do is just frame this a little bit. So, last year, we had a K-12 program review for our socio-emotional learning, and that was a committee that consisted of teachers, administrators, mental health team, really the work of many, and that particular program looked at reviewing and assessing our pre-K to 12 guidance, counseling, our mental health teams, and any programs or services to identify opportunities for program improvement, and as part of that, we looked at a number of things district wide, and we had a number of recommendations, and we had that update back in November when we talked about a lot of the things that we've put in place, and those consisted of things such as, even, even updates since the fall, actually, we've held two graduate courses to become a trauma sensitive school, courses that we've been offering over time, we offered Trauma 1 and Trauma 3, we've continued to have a number of professional development opportunities embedded within the school day here, within our professional development days, as well as sending folks out for some more extensive training with Think Kids, our collaborative problem solving. But aside from all of that, one of the areas that came through as a recommendation, particularly at the high school level, was transition and working with students in that orientation piece, as well as transition, as well as student leadership. And one of the things that I think that we do a lot of things really well, but one particularly thing that really stands out is we constantly look for the continuity and the consistency piece, and so, as that came out as a finding from the review for high school, it really is middle school too, because we've done a lot with transition. So, what can we do to continue to build student leadership throughout from, you've heard about things such as at the IGO, some of our student leadership programs there, it looks different in different places, what's happened at the middle school and high school. And so, I'm going to turn it over to those that have done some extensive professional development in this area with a program that we're going to be bringing next fall and what that looks like. So, why don't we go through, you know mostly everyone, but Diana, if you want to just kind of go around and introduce who's there from the high school with you?
So, from the high school, our two folks who went for that extensive training, which I mentioned at one of our more recent meetings of everything winding up for three days being condensed into two, but that was Pam Anderson and Kaitlyn Adamakis, and so, they're both our lead people for the high school. Sue?
And at the middle school, Karen and Lauren Bailey, one of our guidance counselors, went for that compressed training. They were, they volunteered, and as assistant principal and a guidance counselor, this is really very important to the well-being of students and the community and keeping kids kind to kids.
Absolutely.
So, that the, it makes a nice transition because the WEB program not only fosters leadership in our middle schoolers, but eases the transition from fourth grade to fifth grade, which on the outside looks great, but we can't see on the inside of students, so we're going to try to address the inside of the students going from eight to nine and from four to five.
And we always talk about the climate and culture that we want to have in the building, particularly among our students, and the same, I echo what Sue was saying, that we don't always know what's going on on the inside, and sometimes I will, you know, tongue-in-cheek say, sometimes I think our parents have more of an adjustment with our students coming to the high school, but for those first, for those firstborns who are coming, and for those seconds, you know, you're following in big footsteps potentially with those older siblings that may be coming, or you're the first one to break the ice, so what is that like? Although we do have other things that are in place, we just had the step-up day that took place at the high school about a week or so ago, that's, that's a little bit of an intro, we have students who go down to the middle school, or over to the middle school, I should say, as well, and have conversations with students about different things at the high school too, at the, at the eighth grade level, but once you step into those doors, what's that gonna be like, you know, and what is that first, real feeling of that first day of, I'm here, now what does this mean, you know, like, oh, my goodness, if I get turned around in the hallway, what's gonna happen, you know, who do I turn to and what do I look to? So, both of the programs are, they really mirror each other in many ways, and I think what we do like in particular is the fact that there's that, it's not only helping our freshmen from, and fourth graders into fifth grade, from start to finish in a given year, but it's also giving those leadership skills to our upperclassmen as well, and really allowing them to kind of be those big brothers and sisters in the building and help our students as they navigate through in that freshman year. They've got somebody potentially that they can turn to that they didn't know before, or a group of people that they potentially didn't know before that now they can turn to, so.
So, one of the things that we're talking about the course, the trauma sensitive school, we took the course, the trauma sensitive school, and we introduced the idea of Link Crew and WEB as being parts of making us trauma sensitive schools socially and emotionally connected to students and also developing leadership. So, this has.
Do we wanna do?
Has videos, you can get it on Google, we can save eight minutes and just go right past that.
It's alive, it's alive.
There's people behind us wanna do it, yeah.
Just Google it, Link, Boomerang Project, Link Crew and WEB, cause that has a little
bit of information, but also, it's right there, so, you know, basically, you're looking for the, the short term, long term, and there's also staff outcomes in terms of helping the staff understand the social emotional needs of the students in their classrooms. And Karen and Lauren have already begun our process. We've let our fourth grade parents know, thanks to the elementary principals, and we have started our training in the high school, starting tomorrow.
Yep.
Starting the training, and it's very energetic, very fun, and it really makes those students stand up and lead.
So, overall, as you can see from the slides, just, there are those short-term outcomes, it is that transition, it is the social skills improved hopefully through some programmed activities that the students will be doing throughout the year, and then, of course, we're always looking for that positive school environment and to build upon what we already have. There are those long-term outcomes, which we are hoping to see just across the board, and sometimes that measure is not always data-driven, sometimes it is, but not always, but we are hoping to see some academic performance improvements potentially, maybe those students who, who have lacked a little bit in that will make those connections to school, and the academics will kick in, the social piece of it, attendance, school attendance, the school community as a whole, and building those leadership skills. And as Sue mentioned too, of course, we're sharing all of this with staff, including putting them through some of these activities, so that was an introduction to our full staff with it, so there's a shared understanding of those, of the relationships that we want to continue to cultivate, and it's really a whole school approach that we're looking at through shares, through these shared strategies that we'll be using too. So, they've begun the preparation, and it began.
And some of the things we did in preparing the teachers is looking beyond the academics to changing teachers' mindsets about misbehaving students, and that also melds beautifully with our Think Kids initiative, because that's what it is, it's, it's what's motivating the behavior and thinking in terms of a student will be, they want to be good, they want to succeed, and what's getting in the way, sort of, we say around the Aherns, so what's up with that, you know, as the student is banging the wall. And then, you know, Marshall memo articles that we share with the staff, you know, bringing that to the forefront of their mind, and we had, in both schools, some very interesting staff meetings led by our trained WEB and Link leaders, I don't know if you wanna describe that a little bit?
So, we, we introduced the faculty to what the WEB and Link programs would look like, and, and the purpose of them, as you've heard from our principals, and then we ran through one of the activities, which is called balloon frantic, and the idea behind it is that, you know, teachers are always trying to keep so many things up in the air, meeting the needs of all of their students, and taking care of all of the work that is involved in teaching, and at times, you know, you drop, you drop some balloons, and try to look at it like every, every balloon that's dropped is a kid who's falling through the cracks, and, and every single one of those kids really matters. So, what do we do to help that if we're trying to keep everything in the air, and it's hard? So, looking at our students really can be our best resources, and leaning on them a little bit to, for them to step forward and take on those leadership roles, and help take care of those younger students so that they don't slip through the cracks.
So, we had the.
Do you want to add to that?
We did the same activity, so.
But you wanna, what else happened at the faculty meeting, so after they participated, then?
So, what we did is we, we were a little bit behind the middle school, so after our activity, we also talked to the teachers about nominating students, giving us recommendations, and we had a form that we gave them as their exit ticket so that they could give us some names, and can I keep going?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'm gonna skip around. So, from that point, we were actually given about 125 names from teachers, so it was really awesome of students they felt would be great leaders, and we really asked for a wide variety of students. We don't want all the top scholars and the top athletes and the top musicians, we want a wide variety of students. So, we were really excited about that until Kaitlyn and I came to the realization that we could only pick 40, and, you know, we didn't know how many would apply, we had over 80 students apply, so it was really kind of heart-wrenching at times because, as you already know, we have some great students in this school, so, and we really had to say no to a lot of great kids. So, we have a really, we're rather excited, we have quite a, quite a variety, and we had to, you know, look at 10th grade, 11th grade, boys, girls, musicians, artists, what clubs were they belonging to, so we're hoping we have a nice mix, and we'll do our kickoff activity tomorrow, I know you'll probably talk a little bit more about yours, but we're gonna do ours tomorrow, since we have exams, we're able to, as soon as exams are done, we're doing pizza, and then, we have two other teachers helping us, and we're gonna kickoff our Getting to Know You, May Day, whatever, May Fun in June, the May Development Day in June, so we're really excited about, about doing that tomorrow.
And those students were invited by letter to come to an informational meeting.
Yes.
And that information then was given to them, and they had a choice, and we said to them, if you're busy, you know, and you know that you've got a full plate, then please, just take a step back, that's okay, it's good to make a decision like that, because you have to commit, you have to be able to commit. So, again, having the numbers that we did have come in, we were really excited to see those numbers come in too, so, I don't know who yours would.
We did, we did, for the WEB.
had to, you know, look at tenth grade, eleventh grade, boys, girls, musicians, artists, what clubs were they belonging to? So, we're hoping we have a nice mix, and we'll do our kickoff activity tomorrow. I know you'll probably talk a little bit more about yours, but we're gonna do ours tomorrow, since we have exams. We're able to, as soon as exams are done, we're doing pizza, and then, we have two other teachers helping us, and we're gonna kickoff our Getting to Know You, May Day, whatever, May Fun in June. The May Development Day in June, so we're really excited about, about doing that tomorrow.
And those students were invited by letter to come to an informational meeting.
Yes.
And that information then was given to them, and they had a choice, and we said to them, "If you're busy, you know, and, and you know that you've got a full plate, then please, just take a step back, that's okay, it's good to make a decision like that, because you have to commit, you have to be able to commit." So, again, having the numbers that we did have come in, we were really excited to see those numbers come in too, so, I don't know who yours would...
We did, we did, our, the, for the WEB program, WEB is where everybody belongs. So, last Tuesday, we did the, it's called Spring Play Day, which is the first preview of their training. And the goal of the day isn't really so much to train the kids, as it is to start exposing them to the curriculum, and, and to the activities that they will be running in the summertime at the, at the orientation with the fifth graders, or the ninth graders at the high school. So, we did, you know, some whole-group activities, and then we broke them up into small groups, sort of modeling what, what they'll see at the training and the orientation, again, in August. They'll be responsible for some small groups of fifth graders, about ten to twelve kids in each group, and there'll be two leaders assigned to each of those groups. And they'll run activities very similar to the ones that we did this week, but it really was about team-building, and just really cultivating that leadership, and helping kids understand what leadership is, what it looks like, and what it means to be a leader in our school.
So, that's what they did, they did the Spring Play Day, a couple of hours at the middle school, there were some teachers helping out with the small groups, so they got to learn a little bit about it. And then, in planning for the summer orientation, there's a lot of planning that goes into this, for example, at the middle school. We have summer programs at the middle school, and the rooms are being used, so we had to change where courses were going to be offered, where activities were going to be, changed the cleaning schedule of the school, because we need to be able to have the fifth-grade rooms available for those students to have their small-group training in addition to the gym and the cafeteria. Also, the dates for the training for the, the students, it's two days, the two days of twenty...
Twenty-third and twenty-fourth.
Twenty-third and twenty-fourth, and then, the kids come in on the twenty-seventh, that Monday before the teachers are back. So, those, those teachers need time to get into their rooms to prepare them, to make them beautiful for the fifth graders. So, it's a, you know, a domino effect, and then, everybody who is, you know, part of the conversation has something good to add, so that we don't end up with a mistake or something that does, people don't know. So, the kids will be there on the day, they'll have their activities, they will meet their classmates, they will see their classrooms, they will go to lunch and have the all-important, nutritious food that is usually served at these events, pizza. And maybe a little ice cream, quite essentially frozen confection. And then, the teachers will pop in and greet them, so that they, when they come in, they will already know where they're going, they'll know upperclassmen, they'll know some teachers. And we'll also have forty kids who are going into the eighth grade, who are already leaders, who've been there, who can help with the eighth-grade students, who've already learned about good citizenship in their seventh grade, you know, experience. So, that as we move them up to the high school, you know, we're trying to build a very strong community of leaders and, and people who can help others.
And logistically, on our end, it's that juggling act, because, you know, two weeks before school begins, we're full-blown, as far as athletics are concerned, as far as music is concerned, teachers are coming back and all of that. So, it was a lot of juggling, and I really have to thank Rich Cormier, our A.D., and Kami Tadoldi, our department head for music, because they both worked with us to be able to find that time when we could do the training for the students. So, our training's gonna be in the afternoon, and our students know that, so we'll be giving them those times as well for the two days. And we were willing, they were willing to kind of bend a little bit as they needed to, and so we were able to really make it work for that time. Our orientation day will actually be held on the first day of the three days of our t, of our staff being back. And part of that is so that our staff can participate in that opening part of it as well. And, and then, we'll go from there on that particular day, and there's a lot of meetings in the morning, which gives that opportunity for the LINK leaders to be able to take the students to their rooms. And the upcoming ninth graders had that opportunity on the step-up day, because they did go to their advisory room, so they already have an inkling of where that's gonna be. Things could shift in the summer, they usually don't, but they could. So, once again, they'll know ahead of time exactly where they're going to and what direction to be going into for it, so. And then, too, for our orientation, it'll be, it'll be similar for the students. So, that personal invitation, we too, the ladies put together an invitation that we put right into the step folder, so hopefully, anybody with an eighth-grade student, when they came home with that information in that folder, it was right in there for them, on a bright kind of orange-yellow piece of paper, "Save the date," for the date of the orientation day. And then, our students will also, the LINK leaders are also gonna be probably making phone calls, like, we know that's old-fashioned, but they're already establishing an Instagram account too.
Yeah.
So, that we can get that information going out. So, the ladies were just working on that too.
You can follow us, @FoxboroughLink.
So, all of that, different activities will be happening on that day, on the orientation day with the students, and then, of course, ongoing activities as we progress throughout that next year as well. So, you can see a little bit of that. We have that homecoming dance, so it's a matter of our LINK leaders really encouraging those freshmen to come, it's one of the best-attended dances of the year, but just encouraging them that, "Yes, this is something you wanna do, yes, you do wanna come, and yes, you do come with friends." And then, the middle school will have their social, we'll do our cocoa and cramb for mid-year exams, more to come on that one. You've got your mid-year reflection, I think, at the middle school that you were looking at, and then, monthly meetings, so lunches at the middle school, and for us, it'll be through advisory that we'll be doing some of those connections and making those connections, so. And then, of course, making that total connection to the story of the starfish, so many of you are probably familiar with it. We, we've utilized it quite a bit at the high school, the middle school I know too, and it's just that story of all those starfish on the beach, and there's a young boy who's taking them one at a time and throwing them in, and the young man, or this older gentleman, I guess, sees him, the story changes a little bit, and says to him, "Why are you doing that? Why are you throwing these starfish? Look at this beach, it's just loaded with them." And the little boy picks up a starfish and throws it in the water, and he says, "Because it matters, and it matters to this one." And so, for all of us, that same feeling, that it matters for each and every one of our students, and we're hoping that we can make those connections, and that those connections will be long-lasting, not just at the middle school, but at the high school as well, and as they continue through. Any questions?
For us?
So, again, go on, find LINK, find WEB, click on, and watch a little bit of the activities happening with it.
Ms. Abrams, you said yours is being led entirely by the eighth grade for next year?
Uh, yes, seventh going up to eighth.
Okay. Why did you want it the whole eighth grade instead of mixing it, so you'd have experienced people?
You mean, six to seven and seven to eight?
Like, why not have some, yeah, yeah.
Because it's the first year.
It's also the, the philosophy of the program for WEB, that it's just, it's the eighth graders who are the, who are the leaders, yeah.
Okay. Deanna?
I'm just excited about this, I think it's great. I think, it, I mean, I've heard the high school discussion, I think it's wonderful for the middle school as well. I think it's great for the eighth graders to be modeling the leadership qualities for the sixth and seventh graders who are coming up, who might be like, "Ooh, that's really cool, I wanna do that when I'm in eighth grade." And I think it's nice, it's, it's just another piece of the puzzle, another, you know, opportunity for kids to reach out and lend a helping hand to other kids. And at the high school, we have so many different things, like band, if you're in band and you're a freshman, you kinda have a, a group, and there are older kids who might be looking out for you, or same with some of the other music groups, or a score. But then, there are other kids, there are other balloons, and this is a great way to reach those kids, especially ones who might be the oldest in their family, and the first one coming to the high school, or might be new to Foxborough. I, I just think it's a really good way to reach out to all of the incoming freshmen, and it is, we do a really good job with transition, but this is, this is another way to really educate our stu, our older students on how to, to lend a helping hand, 'cause sometimes I think they forget what it was like to be a freshman, and this will help remind them what they need to do, and, and some of them haven't forgotten what it's like to be a freshman. I would imagine those were the ones who got the eighty applications from, and really are interested in, in helping bring kids along. One thing I did, I think you went over this at the, the principal's coffee that I was at, that you talked to Pam, but the groups, or the leaders are gonna be in, in male-female groups, so that, you know, they're working together, boys and girls, so you won't have two male leaders or two female leaders together.
We might have two females, because as much as we tried, there, there just weren't as many males.
More girls.
No offense to anybody in this room, but they were very clear, you do not put two boys together.
I have sons, I understand.
So, you can put two girls together, but do not put two boys together.
Someone has to drive the bus. No, it's the truth. No, I think it's exciting, and I, I think it's gonna be a, a real awesome opportunity for the younger kids and the older kids. Can't wait to hear how it develops going forward.
And we have other staff members who have also, as the middle school does too, that have also jumped on this, and have said, "Yes, I can help out." I might not be able to do all aspects, but different parts of it, so we're very excited about that. And philosophically, everybody loves what this, you know, the philosophical piece of all of this and what it looks like. So, we're excited about all of those extra helping hands as well, because I know the hours that these ladies are already putting into it, and I'm sure it's the same at the middle school too.
I like how it's a monthly, kinda like a little check-in, but it doesn't interfere with any of the academics going on.
Yes, absolutely.
I mean, that's, that's very well planned.
And I think it's also, you know, fair to mention that this is a research-based program that's been in existence, and has been successful every place it's been, so that we're taking something, and much as I try to, like Foxboroughize it, Karen says, "We're doing it the way it's supposed to be." "No, it has to be two hours." So, you know, it's there, it's a proven winner, it's something that has had success, so, "Don't tamper with it," she says. I do what she says, you know, it works out fine, you know.
I know how much work went into the social-emotional review, and to see such a very tangible, visible outcome like this, that we know, based on research, will impact students, is really exciting to me, for a couple of reasons. I talk a lot with the fourth-grade teachers who are transitioning kids, and inevitably, there's, there's always those couple of students that they're exceptionally worried about, and knowing that we can really intentionally pair them up with a buddy, that can make a difference for them, gives them a feeling of reassurance, because it's a scary transition for the fourth-grade teachers too, to let the kids go. I've also seen at the IGO school, the older-grade buddies work with the younger buddies and see how much the kids get out of that. And the others, the last thing is the leadership piece. I remember as an eighth grader, and I didn't remember until right now, that some teacher selected me to be in the leadership thing. I never would have ever perceived myself as a leader, ever, ironically, and, but I think that was the start of somebody seeing something in me that I didn't see in myself. So, it'll be really exciting to see how this impacts these kids, and then, how the students, the fifth-grade students, when they get to eighth grade, how many of them will be interested, or the, the freshmen, when they get to be seniors or juniors, when they get the chance to do it, if they do it. So, that's great. Thanks for all the hard work, I know it's a lot.
I also look at the eighth graders, each one of those forty has friends, and they will impact their friends.
Correct.
So, if they have four friends, forty times four, you can do the math, you know, you get a lot of people on board and helping out, and doing the right thing, and helping everybody belong, which is exactly what the whole point is.
I think Rich had a question.
Well, I was just gonna thank you for your work, because a, as I've said before, in, in a few meetings I've been in, that this, these actions to develop social-emotional capacity in kids, both the leadership and the transitioning kids, is absolutely critical to our safe schools, and we, and we can never forget that. If there's anything we do with parents and the public, is we gotta keep chiming that, that building that stability and that capacity is critical, 'cause that's, that's how we, we make a safe environment for everyone. So, we just can't forget it, and I do appreciate, I think you're right, it doesn't take out time out of academics, so that, that's a critical balance, but we just can't forget this. And these things are tough to measure, and sometimes people don't pay attention to them.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the ELA textbook adoption with Dr. Mello, Ms. Shannon Wazeluski, and Ms. Sue Forrest.
As our seat guests approach the table, I will remind everybody that last year, the 2016-2017 school year, we had our ELA curriculum review, and that committee conducted a comprehensive review, K to twelve, of our ELA program. And following the review, the committee identified several areas that we wanted to work on and set some goals around, and they included exploring some new resources that support more effective differentiation of instruction, expanding of literature selections, to include more diverse titles, increased opportunities to integrate technology, as you know, based on our technology plan and our technology standards, and also, always when you have a K to twelve committee, we look at how we can provoke, promote stronger vertical alignment across the board. So, the committee went through a process, in some cases, there were pilots, they, and they're, they're gonna tell you more about it, but they explored a variety of resources, and after looking through them, running them through some different measures, getting some feedback from teachers, tonight, they are here, after all that consideration and all that work, to give us their recommendation for what they would like to do next. So, I will turn it over to Ms. Sue Forrest, our K through eight, ELA Social Studies Title One Director, and Ms. Shannon Wazeluski, our high school English department head. So, take it away, ladies.
That sounds great. Hi, everybody, nice to see you. So, Allison sort of captured the essence of our work last year, and it's nice seeing all of this come to fruition with the decision-making piece, in terms of what's going to best serve our students' literacy, and literary-wise, going forward. So, you know, the beautiful thing about the work we've done so far in the area of literacy, and I think I, I know I speak for the high school as well, is we've spent the last couple of years really looking at what our needs are, and our teachers have spent a lot of time developing substantive, rigorous units of study toward that vertical alignment that Dr. Mello referred to. But, in that process, and through the year-long review process, we really had to identify some of those gaps. And so, specifically at the middle school, we really identified those gaps that speak to providing students more and more with a more personalized approach to their own learning. And so, when we looked at the materials that we had, we've got some terrific novels, and we even have some great, you know, short stories and other types of text, but part of our process of the review last year was to really look at, was that enough? And is it current enough? And is it really meeting the needs of all students in terms of their interest, their readiness, and in terms of the critical thinking pieces that we really wanna take our students through? So, Study Sync was really a great answer for us, because it's different than a lot of traditional programs. I actually prefer to call it a, a set of resources for us, while it's certainly designed as a program for some districts who need that really linear program format, for us, it provides us the ability to customize with so many resources that they provide in the program. We can take the good work that we've had, that we've been working on, and meld it with so many of the aspects of this Study Sync resource, so that we can truly meet students where they're at now, and more personalize their approach. And so, what we did was take our, it's designed as a grade six through twelve program to begin with.
I was just gonna say, before you go on, can you just give them some of the features of the Study Sync?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So, the beauty of, of the program is that it does have so many different features, and a lot of them are current. So, as we move toward more of a blended learning approach, where we want students to engage in their literacy, both online and with some traditional print text, it allows for that. So, there are many features, we, the feature of the BLAST is really high for student engagement. It takes a look at current event pieces, where they can actually, teachers can assign it out to students, and students weigh in and engage in discussions around these current topics through that digital option, which is really great. It has core literature units, which look more traditional, but they can be assigned out, a class can go through them in more of a, a traditional approach, in terms of a shared community experience around a piece of text, but then, it's easily and very quickly differentiated out through their instructional path. So, the instructional path is different than a traditional approach, because it offers numerous text excerpts that really tie in a whole theme that the teacher can guide students through, but those excerpts can also be differentiated out. So, depending on where the students are at in terms of their individual needs in the area of reading, teachers can easily select and assign out a very personalized piece of text, whereby students really are able to still meet the grade-level standards, but with that level of modification in place, which is great. It's got the audio features, so for those students who may need to revisit a piece of text, they can go off and do that in a more individualized way, and actually do a rereading, listen to the text if they need to be exposed to a piece of text ahead of time, that's a feature that would really support that as well. It really is highly engaging for students, because it involves them in reading some of the BLAST they listened to and other pieces of literature, and overall, it's just really a strong collaborative tool, whereby students can kind of engage in, in conversations together. So, it offers a balance of some traditional print means, but a comprehensive set of more of a blended approach, the online piece with the print, numerous excerpts, as I'd mentioned, and then, that scaffolded layer of support to meet some of the students who have some specifically identified needs for, in the area of reading. So, for us, yeah, for us, that was a really great choice in looking at that. So, what we did was look at it in grade six, seven, and eight, we had the reps from McGraw-Hill come out, I wanna say sometime in February, and they did a comprehensive overview for all of our teachers who would be looking at that, including the high school teachers who joined us at the Ahearn that day, so that we could get the big picture, and really weigh that picture against the recommendations that came out of the ELA... of the ELA review. Those key recommendations really have been our beacon as we went through every piece of this, you know, evaluating this particular resource, so that we would always go back to that and ask, is this a resource that's going to really help us meet our students' needs? And so we then used our content cycle meetings to continue to review it together. We, I sent teachers off in grade-level teams to pour through the material together, and then individually. They also spent numerous hours over days, weeks, in the last few months, looking at it with those, with those points in mind. And then I met with teams on and off, just to weigh in on their process and to get their feedback. I shared their feedback with the reps from McGraw-Hill when they had questions, they got back to us in a timely fashion. And at two other junctures, we had the McGraw-Hill people come back to both answer questions and to do some formalized pilot training. So amidst this, the sixth grade team felt strongly that they wanted to commit to a short-term pilot of this, which actually was a great, a great option for us. It allowed us to take a team and have them delve more deeply into this resource when you're living it versus just reviewing it. It's a completely different experience. This pilot meant that students would be using it and engaging with it, and that's what we wanted to know. How responsive were they to that? And so the ideal of having the sixth grade team do it is they're our greatest, our largest team in terms of number of teachers. So our sixth grade team has five members, whereas the seventh and eighth grade teams have two members each. So it seemed to be the best value for our pilot box, so to speak, which was free, by the way. And, but anyway, so the sixth grade went through, and then they had a formal pilot training, which was a full day, which was really helpful, and we've had an ongoing relationship with the reps, so they've gotten everything they needed. Eighth grade, while they didn't pilot it, we used those content meetings as well, and we did with seventh grade. So at the end of this process, sixth grade and eighth grade felt that this was a set of resources, that given the work they've done, and given their specific identified needs as a grade-level unit, would really suit them and meet the needs of their students. Seventh grade valued the resource, but they were able to identify pieces that they already have in place that speak to those key points that came out of the recommendation. So one of those pieces, and among the most important pieces, is identifying student choice and better differentiating and more personalizing their experience. And after we came out of the review, seventh grade was proudly the first to spend our money in terms of making some of these customizations to answer to these points. And so they had ordered, identified and ordered a wide range of novels across numerous genres with the goal of giving all seventh graders at the beginning of the year, choice about what they were going to read, and that was a pivotal change for seventh grade at that time. Not only that, but they've been, they've been really using the technologies, I think, to engage students a little bit more. So that's been really key. So ultimately, while they thought these pieces would be nice to have for seventh grade, because of some of the decisions and the purchases they made to fill some of the gaps, they felt like it would just be a nice to have for them. And so when we weigh the cost of a set of resources against what we already have in place, it really wouldn't have been financially responsible to say, we're just gonna do it just so that we can say we have a grade six, seven, and eight. And when we looked closely at the needs of grade eight and grade six, it really was a great match. And for those reasons, for those reasons, that's why we, we went with that, for just those two grade levels. In terms of the, the vertical piece, there are some things that are a little more important and some that are a little less important. So one of the questions you may have is, well, how does that affect vertical, you know, that vertical progression? But in this case, it's not so much that everybody uses the same materials, but that we all have substantive materials that provide that rigor and opportunities for differentiation for all of our students. And most important, that students at any grade level have a common instructional experience and access to common resources. So we know that sixth grade will have that, and we know that eighth grade will have that, and seventh grade has their well-developed units with having answered to some of these pieces, and so they'll have that common instructional experience. When we get together in August, that's where that vertical tie is going to be for us, because we'll have the folks, we actually have a speaker coming, who's going to speak to all of the staff specifically about how to move forward with a blended learning experience, and that's the key piece, I think, that's going to tie us all together. So it's not so much what we use, but how we use it and how we engage those students. So that's our rationale for going forth with that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The online portion, I know what online means, but does that mean they're gonna have access to it at home, on their phones as well, or just in school?
Yeah, no, they should, they have a user account, so as with any type of account, they have a user login and all of that, so they absolutely can, and they need that. That's a great question. They need that, because the teachers have the ability to group the students digitally and send out assignments in that way. And so they're going to be expected to do some of these things outside the classroom.
And I like how you use the teachers to kind of decide.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. It's, it really has a nice management tool for the teachers as well. This system really provides fluidity for them. So as they're able to assign, they're also able to collect data on their students in terms of assignment completion, but also the quality, the rigor, the types of questions is a whole formative and summative assessment piece that we can leverage on top of what we have as a district in terms of assessment. So it's, I really feel that it's well worth it. And as I've said to my ELA teachers, I'm more of a homegrown person. I like to build curriculum and instructional pathways from the ground up. So for me to feel really excited about a core set of materials like this, it must really be worth it. So, you know, the final piece is not just in our, we try to have some kind of process. So I did have an evaluation rubric whereby they judge the content and the organization of the materials, and in the end, their recommendation was that we try to go forward with this, so we're excited about that. Did I take all the airtime?
You took all my time. I guess I have nothing to say. So we, coming out of the review last year, we identified picking a ninth, a new ninth grade text as one of the biggest challenges for us. And so we've spent the year kind of doing that process. At the start of the year, we kind of met as a team and identified kind of our biggest needs and what we were looking for, for a resource. And we identified, we would need something that would support vertical alignment, which has been mentioned numerous times, which would support consistency across the levels, support our current curriculum, because we didn't want to change our curriculum, because we feel that it's, it's very strong, and we've built it, as Sue said, from the ground up. And so we needed something that would support what we already do. We were looking to add some currency and some diversity to our reading selections, and we really needed an online component. We have that in our ninth grade and our eleventh grade text, and we see how helpful it is. So we wanted to add that for our ninth graders. So that's what we found. We found the Houghton-Mifflin Hardcore text, which is the same one that we use for our ten and eleven grades, just the ninth grade version. And so we've identified that as something that will meet all of those needs that we outlined at the beginning of our process. I'm much shorter.
Are you sure you're not a mathematician? You're very efficient.
I have a question, just because I don't know. Why a six-year subscription? Is there a reason for that? I just, it seems like a long time, so I don't know if you do threes, sixes, but, and I have no bent, I just don't know why.
I can speak to that.
Yeah, thank you.
So we have a six-year curriculum review cycle, so every six years is when our money's become available, after we go through a thorough process. So, yeah, it makes sense, and you do get a, what's that called, Bill, when you get?
Bundled rate?
Yeah, a bundled rate, thank you. It's a discounted rate as each year. Does that make sense?
That makes sense now. Missed that.
No, that's okay.
Actually, it's a great question, because the beauty of committing to that six-year cycle, besides the money piece of that, is that it really, we're not going to be jumping all over the place.
Yeah, I agree.
In order to really understand the efficacy of these resources, we have to give it some time.
Yeah, that's sort of why we have our review cycles standard that way as well. So does anybody have any questions?
Motion?
I make a motion to approve the ELA textbook adoption request for grade six, eight, and nine, as presented. Do I need to put the amounts in there, Bill? Are we good?
No, you're good.
Okay.
I'll second that. All's in favor? Three, zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work.
Thank you for all your work. And now the work is just starting.
Up next, we have the Wellness Committee update with Ms. Janice Watt and Ms. Linda Mealy.
Hello, ladies.
Hello. Janice and I wanted to update you on changes and reviews in the Wellness Team report that we do every year. We did have one recommended policy change, and that was that the number of FISET hours for grade eleven and twelve is thirty-five hours a year. The current policy doesn't have it listed, so that request language change has been provided to Superintendent Burdo's for school committee approval.
So just to interject here for a minute, so as far as any of our policies, we'll have that go to our subcommittee over the, over the summer. That's part of what they came out of. It's, it's already linked to another policy that we have that already lists that as a graduation requirement, and you realize during your study this year that it was omitted from that one.
It's always good to have extra eyes on our policy handbook, because there are so many pages in it, and it's great to catch something like that, and it's an easy fix, but we have to follow our, our usual process as we go forward.
So it's not any changes, but something to follow the usual process.
And there were no other changes to the policy recommended at this time. One other exciting thing we did this year, we did have a student representative on the Wellness Committee, Brian Gardner. So it was fun having a student give us his ideas and reviews of nutrition, and what's going on in the cafeteria, all Janice's changes, and the things that she's been doing, and it's been good having his ideas and his friends, too. Also, other updates on the school wellness report. We do provide nutrition information about the school meals on the food service website, so we wanted to increase that. So Janice has been working with, we've had a student intern also work, a Phara casan work with us this year, and our goal is to have ready for fall of this year, to have hundreds of nutrition facts and recipes for all the school menus. So that'll be available to all the parents. As a school nurse, I have a lot of parents come in, and they ask me about, their students have different allergies, different diets, they might be gluten-free, soy, egg, and dairy. So I can refer them to the website now and say, you can look on there and see exactly what's going to be on the menu for the week, as opposed to going to speak to the cafeteria people. Or, so that'll be nice to have the parents have all that information, too. The nurses and the Wellness Committee, we do meet in the fall with different programs that are available in Foxborough, that provide a lot of beneficial services to the people in Foxborough, including WIC, SNAP, and also the discretionary fund. So we meet and talk about what's going on in the town, all the services that they do and provide to all the parents and people, and that information's also going to be up on the website for our parents to see. The nurses have been developing materials such as flyers, table tents, news articles about nutrition and wellness to share with teachers and faculty. And we also had the intern develop flyers, so I believe Janice gave them to you in the packet, and these were on all the teachers in the lunchroom. And they're monthly and seasonal, different type of tips and health tips for all the teachers to see. So we think, what we wanted to work on is to expose the teachers to nutrition, and so hopefully they pass that down to the students. So hopefully that's, that's worked, and I'm not sure if we're gonna keep doing that, but if there's interest in it, we could. Another thing we're working on is, the committee is researching the recess before lunch model to determine if that was, is beneficial to the students and feasible for the Foxborough schools. So we presented that to, Michelle McCarthy is our principal representative on the committee, and she's been bringing that to the other principals, and they've been discussing that and the pros and cons of it, and see if it would be workable and feasible in each school. Every school is different, and I know, like, the IGO has lunches from eleven-thirty to one, so it might be very hard for them to have recess before lunch, so.
Now, before you continue, I did notice on the page of the policy that you gave us, the very last sentence, and it does say, "When possible, schools will schedule recess for elementary students before lunch, so that children will come to lunch less distracted and ready to eat." So pending the decision-making on that, we might want to think about, I mean, I know it says "when possible," but just, it's already in our policy that we support that if we can do it, so I think it's great that we're looking into it further. I always wondered about that.
The logistics of the scheduling part.
Right, that's the difficult part, is scheduling.
Always is.
Hand washing.
Hand washing, so important.
So the Wellness, the Wellness Team, our role really is just to develop goals and update policy language. It's not really that exciting. We try to make it exciting, but, you know, we measure, monitor the policy. So at our last meeting, I have to say that this committee is very active, like, the participation is very good as far as having different stakeholders that attend the meetings regularly, and that's really refreshing to me. My former district that I worked in, it was like pulling teeth to get people to come to Wellness meetings, so it's great. So I think, we didn't this year do an assessment of the policy, but I have since learned that it's supposed to be an annual assessment, so I think that's how we'll hit the ground running in the fall. And then, again, the nutrition information, it's, because it's me, myself, and I, and sometimes an intern here and there, it is a major undertaking, and I'm about a third of the way there, but I want to make sure that there, you know, the nutrition information has integrity, I don't just want to put up anything. So that is a very time-consuming process. And, you know, our goal is to continue to look at the recess before lunch model. And just some other wellness updates. So Linda had spoke about, those were goals that we had presented to you last year, and we just wanted to give you updates on that. But some of the other things we did around the topic of wellness is, we administered a high school survey. There were, I forget how many questions, probably about a hundred questions, but thirteen percent of the student body took it, and it was, it garnered some very enlightening information. We're doing pretty well, I thought, and kids gave some really good, solid suggestions and feedback. So I shared that with the high school staff, and we're making, we've already made some changes based on that, but looking forward to implementing some more. The school rental policy had been updated with language to encourage outside groups, to include healthy choices. You know, it's, it's so easy to sell candy, right? But we want to make sure that there's healthy options, and I did notice that at the MICA this year that we had.
That was wonderful.
We had some really nice, healthy choices for people, and well-received. We did launch the menu sign boards at the high school. We have two of them up, fifty-five inch TVs, and they have the lunch menu, but then it also has a loop of just wellness videos that I can change, I can customize it, so I have a lot of fun with that. And I just learned at the, the DESI, DESI had a Healthy Kids, Healthy Bodies, or something to that effect, in May, and they kicking off this school wellness initiative for, they recognized that districts have trouble getting wellness committees to meet and be active, so they're, they're kicking off this switch school wellness initiative for Thriving Community Health Campaign. So to give schools a lot of support, a lot of ideas, best practices, so that, that should be forthcoming and helpful to us as a committee, so that's about it in the wellness world.
I think you've used social media really well through this year.
Thank you.
There's a lot of good posts on the Facebook and all the other sites.
Thanks, yeah, we have a couple hundred followers, I like it. Yeah, it's a great tool to get the message out about what we're doing. Janice's website is awesome.
It is?
Yeah. Thank you.
Rich?
Actually, if that's okay.
Actually, if that's okay. I just wanted to say, we've come so far in this area, both food services, the Wellness Department, the interaction with our school nurse team. Since my oldest, who just graduated, was in kindergarten, the changes, the positive changes that have been made in all of these areas, including, we had no wellness at the high school, I mean, not that we didn't have wellness, but we had no wellness classes, we had no health classes at the high school when, gosh, before I was on the school committee. So this is probably going back eight years now. I might be a little off on my timing, but it's not, it's a fairly recent change that we've re-instituted wellness in ninth and tenth grade, and more recent, in eleventh and twelve. And the health classes, too. I remember, I can't remember if I was on the advisory committee or the school committee when Janelle came before the school committee, Janelle Erskine, to ask us to put the health classes back for the ninth and tenth graders and demonstrated the need for that. And our food services, I mean, years ago, they used to sell candy in the elementary schools at lunchtime, so, and now we're talking about all these wonderful, healthy things. And yes, the MICA offerings were much better this year in the food services area. So there's just so many positive changes, and so much hard work that has gone on behind the scenes, but thank you for everything that you're doing. It's definitely a positive change.
And I think, too, it was mentioned by Linda, the website, I mean, we all saw the video back a number of months ago with all of the scratch cooking. I've had other districts contact me that I'm putting in touch with Janice for what they're doing and the work that you've done and the interns that you've had. And just even sitting in the meeting, looking over the survey from the students, it's interesting to see their comments on what they're saying and to be able to take that feedback and really do something with it. So you've done a lot, and I agree, a lot has been accomplished.
And you know, our meal counts are continuing to grow, like it's, so.
The food smells really good.
That's good. Thank you. Great staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, we have the 2018-2019 Foxborough High School Student Handbook revisions with Ms. Diana Myers-Packler, Mr. David Pierce, and Ms. Beth Sylvia.
So as they're coming up to the guest table, Ms. Sylvia is not able to be with us here this evening, so one of the things that we annually look at are any changes to the handbook for your approval. More towards the middle of the year, January-ish, is the time when we've had course, new courses come before you, that would be something that would be something that would be within the handbook, too, as far as course approval. But this is really more about any changes that are there, and they're going to speak to you about really a lot of work that has taken place on reorganizing. Same content, but making it where it's more user-friendly and being able to access the information, so I'll turn it over to the two of you.
Thank you very much. So I do have to just give kudos, one of my favorite words, to David Pierce and also to Carla Lavery, one of our secretaries here in the building, but David's really done a yeoman's job of doing a lot of cutting and pasting and moving things around for us and offering suggestions in, so again, huge thanks on that end. We really do appreciate that, and between Beth and David and I having those conversations about, you know, does it look good here, what is it here, and what do we want to do with it? So you're just receiving an updated version of what came out late last week because we're kind of fluid on many aspects of what is happening. But the first part of the handbook, actually, if we go back a number of years, and Shilis Neid was the one who filled me in, there were kind of a group of parents who took it on, some moms, and thank you to whomever they were years ago, to try to do some reorganization of the handbook at that time, and I believe this was under Mr. Theodos at that time, early on when he first arrived. So there haven't been any real shifts now in probably the last fifteen years in how the handbook looks and how it was put together. So with that, we found that things started to go in various directions, and actually in conversation with Amy, one of the examples of that would probably be under a new title that we call the School Safety, I think was the one that Amy, you and I were talking about, and you know, you'd find one thing on like page eighteen, and something else on page thirty-two, and something else on page two, and it just wasn't making sense. We knew we needed to kind of clean things up and reorganize them. So that's what we have, is that we do have titles, we had some titles that were there, and we've added some new ones. So we have the general school information, so things under that would be our bell schedule, what do you need to be admitted in, you know, what needs to be in that packet of information, if a student's going to withdraw, the physical exams portion of it that students do need to have, whatever those grade levels happen to be, what's our attendance policy, and the idea of senior privilege, too, because students can leave, so that's a little bit of that piece, too. Then that school safety and security. This is a new title for us, but what's under it are those things that were, again, in random places all around. So what are our emergency procedures? A school resource officer, which if you look to the bottom on the same page, we didn't have a description for our school resource officer at all in the handbook, and we've had a school resource officer. So again, something that we wanted to have noted in the handbook. Searches by school officials, that's in, care of the school, security cameras, the corridor, the hall passes, those were all there. So it was, again, categorizing and what seemed to fall naturally under that. Our academic information, attendance and makeup, tardiness, absences, you can see all of those titles in through there, our AP course information, and another addition to that piece was senior project. So we've had senior project now for a number of years. That is actually in our program of studies, but we thought it was also a good piece of information to be in our student handbook for information for students as they're looking down the road as we go further along. So I gave you those two written pieces in there that I didn't give you in your original packet on that. And then our graduation requirements with that. Student services, this is a new category, so what are those services that we do have available for students? So we have our nurse, we have our concussion pieces in there, we have guidance, our media center library, that was probably, what, about three pages, I think, of information, and Rachel Barrett was more than willing to cut that down into really streamline and what's the purpose of here. There were things dealing with books and books being out, and so much of that has gone online now that it just needed to kind of just be reeled in and really be kind of what it is, and what this, how we utilize this place on a daily basis and how students can utilize it. We have our school tutors, our school-to-career program, and also putting in, of course, the cafeteria, so taking a look at, yes, we serve breakfast, yes, we serve lunch, and if you have somebody that perhaps is on the lower end of income or has fallen on hard times, that they can contact our director of food services and be able to get the information that they would need for being able to have the free or the reduced lunches. So it just makes sense to also have that as well. Our co-curricular activities are in there, our code of conduct, this is a new format, not too much of a change in certain things in there, but we will share those with you of what we're looking at. And then a glossary, so we've always had harassment, bullying, and hazing, but they really are definitions based on the law, so we're putting them under, they're still in the code of conduct, but we're putting them under that for a definition if somebody wanted to go and take a look of what does that mean and what constitutes harassment or what constitutes bullying. So we've just taken that section and put that under glossary. And then the athletic code of conduct, which has gone in as well, and Rich Cormier has really boosted that up a bit. So new in is the descriptor for the school resource officer. The senior project, this is the same wording that came out of our program of studies, and it's still in the program of studies. And then on the next page, the one thing that we realized, it was one of those aha moments, is we have a World Language National Honor Society, and they are getting their information together to put into the handbook. So we have the National Honor Society in there, we are an honor society, but we're going to add in there the World Language National Honor Societies as well. And then in the handbook, Rich actually just came forward with these two pieces to be added to that section of it, and that is adding information regarding the online registration, because that hasn't been any, even though that's something now that we are doing, so he's putting that into the handbook, and that that's every season, so that wording will be in there. And then also just a clarification regarding unexcused absences from practices whereby it will say, "To the effect of repeated unexcused absences by the student athlete from practice will be viewed as quitting, and the student athlete will no longer be considered a part of the team." So there's always ways it's explained fully in there, it's in with coaches when they have their coaches' nights, it's also in the handbook that, you know, if you're not going to be in school, or if you're sick, or you're in school but you don't show up to a practice and need to let a coach know why, and if you're just not, then it's kind of like you disappeared, and so you're no longer a part of that team. So there are just those steps that are there, and so it's a clarity on wording for that piece.
So he added something to the Group F, the chemical thing as well?
Yes.
Which is a backup as well.
Yes, it's just a backup piece on there as well, too, so. And then we got into the groupings. So you want to take it away a little bit on that one, David?
Sure, I did quite a bit of research focusing more on the Hockamuck League schools as a basis to try and understand how their code of conducts were outlined. I also used my experience from Pembroke where we did use groupings, and I know that Ms. Myers-Packler has experience with groupings and duck pairing, some of the other places she's been. And what I did was I ended up forming these groupings and consequences and categories on a merger of all of those ideas. So some of them had the opening paragraph, some of them had the consequences listed below, some of them had the numbered, I don't think anything had all three of them, but I kind of liked all three of it and kind of tried to merge that together. That was my thinking in terms of building the consequences. I think for us, again, when we talk about the old handbook, things were in there redundantly, things were in there out of order. I think if you looked at the current code of conduct, the first thing in there is under letter A, then letter T, then letter C. So just an example of the way it was just kind of like, it almost seems like things were just added as they went to a certain extent. Some things were in there without any consequences listed. You know, there's a general comment of respect for persons and things, but nothing about what happens if you don't respect persons or things. And then the other thing I think is administrator on the ground who uses it on a daily basis, you know, there have been plenty of times where a kid has violated what we would think is the code of conduct, and then I'd look at Ms. Myers-Packler and say, "Well, where is it in the handbook?" Right? There's nothing in here in the handbook, and I'm not going to sit here and make something up that this is what a student that's not in our handbook. So being able to use this as a resource and thinking about the things we deal with on a daily basis, I've been here for two full years now dealing with student discipline, understanding what kids are and aren't doing, and then being able to categorize that within the code of conduct, and then assign consequences that we think are fair based on that. So that's kind of how it all came out. And then, you know, I took all that and put it together, and then we would meet on several occasions to kind of bounce ideas back and forth. As Ms. Myers-Packler said, there's still some fluid movement, you know, we were just debating categories F and G just today, because those are some of the heavier policies in terms of banned substances and illegal activities and things like that. I think, you know, as we're both historians, we look at a handbook as a living document that we have to kind of continue to think about and tweak and move, you know, maneuver as times change. Electronic cigarettes are certainly something that everybody's read about or seen on the news. Last year, I can think of maybe two occasions where we dealt with somebody with an electronic cigarette. This year, I would say you'd multiply that by twenty at least in terms of the amount of things we've dealt with confiscating or kids using, yet electronic cigarette was never something that was in the handbook. It was never a term that was in the handbook. So again, coming up to date with a lot of the changes that we're seeing on the ground in the school as well, and that's what produced this document.
So on the last page of the whole document, again, tried to be a little bit more succinct in adding another piece on here, so just to also let you know, these pieces have gone to our legal counsel, and he is reviewing them. We did speak today, and he was not able to finish all of the above, but we also had a very frank conversation on the alcohol part of it, which was not in your original, but I am going to mention to you all tonight. So in looking at those changes in the code, possession in the current handbook as it stands, and just to let you all know, I have the old handbook and I had our new version as we're looking at it, and I literally went through and checked off because I wanted to make sure that we were putting everything in that we needed to and to make sure that we were doing the changes. So like anything, there's a couple of times where we're going like, "Oh, my God, we missed on that piece." Not intentionally, but I think we've got it pretty much captured right now with this. So possession of tobacco products and possession of smoking devices and paraphernalia, that had been a D-hole. It's a three-hour after-school. I have to tell you that as far as alcohol, or I mean, as far as tobacco was concerned, we've got the kids not really with a tobacco and not really with the matches and devices and things like that, but it is the e-cigarettes that we're really seeing with them. I do think that for, I'm not quite sure what to attribute it to, except I think education has helped quite a bit in recent years. I also think the cost of cigarettes is astronomical. I know I wouldn't want to be spending my hard-earned money on something like that as well. So we've seen a huge decrease and a huge decline. We'd like to keep it there. So as we had talked about and as we had discussed among us, that it had been a progressive, but we're going to go to what we're looking at is just a three-day out-of-school suspension. You shouldn't have it, it's illegal for you to have it, and I, in some ways, I hearken it to the fact that, an excuse of using this, I guess, as an example, but all of us may well, I don't know all of us, but maybe some of us do partake in having an alcoholic drink, but you don't go bringing that to school with you. You don't go bringing tobacco, which it's against the law to have it on school property, period. It's against the law to have it, and it's against the law to use it, and our students shouldn't be having it. So that was part of our, really, our feeling and our rationale. It's on the lower end of perhaps some of the other things because it is legal, once you are of age to be able to make a purchase, but again, illegal to be using and having here on campus, whether you're an adult or whether you're a student for that. And then smoking would move from what had been a first offense was in school because it was deemed to be, I can remember going back, really, I think in any building I've been in, it's one thing to have the cigarettes in your pocket, it's another thing to be imposing that smell or the smoke or whatever it happens to be in a building and other people are having to inhale it. So that had always seemed to be a larger consequence, that if you were going to be smoking in school, it's going to cost you more if you get caught with that. So it had been progressive where it was a one day out, a two day out, a three day out, but that, too, would go together. It's a three day whether you're in possession or whether you're smoking for those. Then for the smoking devices, that's really what the e-cigarettes were under. It was tobacco possession and or use of smoking devices. So smoking devices moves from being categorized with tobacco possession to its own category. So that's where we have the electronic smoking devices, paraphernalia, possession and use are a five-day suspension. One of the hardest things right now for us is the fact that with the electronic cigarettes, with the vapes, we don't know what's in them. We don't know what it is that the students are going to infuse in them. We don't have all the means to be able to test, shouldn't have them in school to begin with, once again, so this is one of those next levels, because the THC pieces are out there. You can get the little capsules, you can get the liquid. We had a situation recently in which a student had those in their possession. They can be gotten, they can be gotten on the internet, and they can also be purchased at the, whoever distributing, whatever we're calling those shops now, I don't know what they're called. Fine for choices, but it's not fine for our students, and it's not legal for them either to have it.
And there are some devices that also can conceal the scent of it more, so you really don't know what it is. We can open up the e-cigarette and smell it, and we still can't necessarily figure out exactly what's in there, it's pretty difficult.
Strawberry scents, cherry scents, there's all kinds of scents that will cover those pieces on it. And then for drugs, so this is one that is new for you, but in taking a look at this one. With the way that the drugs are in our handbook, but it's also the way that the law reads as well, the drugs are categorized along with weapons, and what it says is that if you are in possession, it's a ten-day suspension. If you're under the influence, it's a five-day suspension. The reality is, in a brief conversation with, again, legal counsel, if you're under the influence, you're in possession because you've ingested it. So to mirror these along with alcohol, which is currently five days and five days, it's the same with the drug element, it's ten days and ten days, possession or under the influence. The drugs by law are that ten day. If you're in possession, it falls under the law, so we have to go with that. David, do you want to add?
No, I just think, you know, there's a lot of conversations out in the nation about zero tolerance right now, and I don't think that either of us are zero tolerance administrators per se, but we also recognize the fact that these are incredibly unhealthy, incredibly unsafe for students. You know, we just had presentations from Wellness, right? Social, emotional, all those kind of things. But I think in a school building, you have to have some level of zero tolerance for these devices. We're planning on educating both the faculty and the students first day. When we come back, we have assemblies for all the classes, and I think educating students on what is and what isn't allowed and what the new penalties are for these things will hopefully be a large deterrent on them thinking about whether or not they want to bring those items in the building. I can't think about, as a parent myself, I can't think about any kickback from parents in terms of, "Why is it that stiff?" I mean, you know, I don't think anybody would say, "It should be okay for my kid to bring it in," or "They shouldn't be penalized for it." So, you know, for us, it's difficult because we, again, do not believe in stiff penalties, but we do think it's necessary to try and certainly have a level of deterrence to students so that they're not bringing those things into the school building.
I have a couple of questions for you. For the drugs one, the ten-day suspension, will you be offering treatment, or places where they could go for treatment, or support?
We have places that we can recommend. Sometimes we have to also be very careful on, you know, like anything, because we could say, "Here's a list of places, yes, that you can go for if you need treatment." We also have our social worker who's fabulous. you can go for if you need treatment." We also have our social worker who's fabulous as well, working with parents. So, in our meetings, those meetings are heart-wrenching when we have had them with parents because obviously, parents want their students back in the building. We do, too. But is there a bigger problem? You know, for a student to come to school or to an event under the influence of something, that's saying that there's something else potentially that's going on. Maybe it's just a poor choice, but maybe, again, how can we help improve those soft skills, so to speak, or those other skills? So, to answer the question, yes, there are those places that we would say, "Yes, there's a youth group here. Yes, this particular organization or this particular place offers services, whether it's day treatment programs or overnight programs." There's Westwood in the area, so there's a variety of different things. That way, Riverside, which is a crisis locally here in our area.
It's their choice, is what you're saying.
Yes, yes.
You can't make them do it.
No, we cannot. But we can offer and say, "There are these things if you, if you have an, if you have an interest in that."
I think the marijuana is a trickier one, but we have started to experience, well, I don't want to say started to experience, but we did have one case I could think of that was much more serious than just marijuana, and that was much more intensive, and that was working with the family to try and get them the treatment and the help they needed. So, I think it does kind of depend on the drug to a certain extent, and then it could depend on the number of times a student is caught. I mean, I don't think we've ever had a repeat offender. We were talking about that today. In the two years I've been here, we've never had a repeat offender. So...
I've had one in the six that I've been.
So, you know, that's difficult, too. I think, you know, kid, like she said, you know, you make a mistake, and then it's, you know, how hard do you push versus the parents trying to work with them as well? And all this is, you know, just so you know, it goes back to the school resource officer as well. Frank Azavito is, you know, directly involved with us whenever we're dealing with cases like that. So, we do notify the police departments as well. So, we're working with agencies like that as well.
And my second question is, I know you explained this, and I just, I think I just missed it. So, why do the possession of tobacco products, which was before a smaller penalty than smoking it, why is that now the same?
Well, it's also evening out as we have, as we would like to do with both the alcohol and the drugs. And to just say that this is not, it's not something that's tolerated. It's not allowed here. Again, our numbers are really, probably count on one hand as far as the tobacco was concerned.
Traditional tobacco, like chew or cigarettes? Yeah. Again, I think it's just the idea that these things are illegal, extremely harmful to the health of the student. I think it's hard as an administrator to look at the difference between just having something versus using something, especially when it comes to doing it on school grounds, whatever it is. So, marrying those things together to create, you know, one penalty for one thing versus, you know, me walking in on a student who's doing something or just finished doing something, and then trying to have that debate with them about, you know, where does it go in the book in terms of the category? Did you use it? Did you have it? Did you already ingest it? Are you under the influence of it? You know, that creates a little bit of a gray area, and I think this doesn't create a gray area. Makes it very straightforward of like, you know, tobacco is tobacco, whether you're smoking it, whether it's in your pocket, whether you hand it to another student, or whether I saw you throw it away on camera while you were walking behind me, you know?
Dana?
I have a couple of questions. I, this is tremendous amount of work, first of all. I tried to go back and look at the handbook online, and it, I couldn't even do it myself today.
I have two printed pieces.
I don't have time for this. This was a lot.
When you're frustrated with work, yeah.
I know.
With that document, yeah.
And I have gone and looked for things in the handbook and said, "Where are they? I can't find them." So, I think this is great. The reorganization is great, definitely provides a lot of clarity. With the electronic smoking products, the possession use, I know I went to the principal's coffee that Beth and Janelle Erskine, and I found it really compelling, the amount of situations you've all had to deal with here at the high school. I do, I do think it's probably a challenge for you when there are a group of kids in a bathroom to decide who's just going in there to use the bathroom and who has possession of and is using the device. I just, this is a pretty stiff penalty, and I'm sure you will use good judgment and discretion, but we don't want our kids to be afraid to use the bathroom because they are going to get suspended for five days if they happen to be in there when someone they know is vaping.
Yep.
You know, so that is just, I think that is a concern and a really, a very real one.
Legitimate, absolutely.
What I'm hearing from kids is that they don't want to use the bathroom, and that's, you know, they've got to be able to use the bathrooms at the high school.
Sure. So, what I would say is that you're not guilty by presence, for sure. We've never done that.
Okay. That is reassuring to hear.
No, I would say that in our situations where, where people are lumped together, that might involve maybe a search. If multiple people are in a location, there's something that has been reported to be involved, we might search two or three students that were, or everybody that was in that place. But, you know, a lot of times, if I walk into a bathroom and there's one e-cigarette in somebody's hand, and there's a bunch of people standing around, that's the kid holding, that's the kid without a chair, right? And we would never hold somebody else. I think, I think the students we've talked to, it's certainly a matter of cleaning out the bathrooms and cleaning out that kind of element from those bathrooms so that they can feel comfortable.
Yeah.
I know that the students we talked to certainly don't feel that way, that they're worried that we're going to catch them necessarily. They just don't want to walk in by themselves. They almost want us in there more, is what we're hearing in a lot of cases.
Yeah, I mean, I've heard that as well, honestly, but I just, I wanted to ask the question, so I appreciate that.
And I had an interesting, just brief conversation today. I happened to be up in Mr. Kellyhan's room, and students were doing some video presentations, actually, out of a civil liberties class, and the vaping came up somehow in a conversation. I don't quite remember how it came up. And one of the students said, "Yep, I've been caught twice." And I said, "Okay, so let me just ask the question. We really, truly saw this explode this year at the high school level. Are we accurate on that?" I said, "Dana, tell us, because you're the, you're the students who are experiencing this all the time." And they said, "Absolutely. Absolutely." They said, "Last year, a little bit," and I had, again, one of the culprits right there. And I, you know, I said, "Okay, so end of last year, beginning, end of last year, but not in school. It really is this year." And we know it's at the middle level as well, you know? So, there was just an article out that the companies with the jewels are now promoting, what is it, scholarships for kids, different things that they can do. I mean, it's vape tricks my daughter talks about all the time. It's vape tricks out on YouTube that they're showing. So, there's all kinds of, you know, and the smoke, we know all about zeroing out that students can do. It's in your bag. You take a quick little hit because the nicotine high is so fast, and that's what they want. That's the scary thing about it. It's that much more intense than what cigarettes are right now, and they can do what's called zeroing out. You hold it long enough in your mouth. The vape isn't going to come out. That vape, you know, the vaporizing piece of it is, you're not going to see that. So, kids can do this in a variety of places without ever being caught or really seen because of how this all works. So, and I just had gotten a letter, too, today that was sent by the Attorney General from Mass out to schools, just saying that it's an epidemic, you know, and so, please, just if you're seeing certain things, please X, Y, and Z. But it was just an informational letter that came out just to say it's, it's just exploded everywhere. So, it is, it's so hard, but absolutely, I have to say that I do, and I think our kids would say this, too, that it's not guilt by association, but it's really kind of going down to it. And very often, we'll have students who will say they weren't, or so-and-so wasn't, you know, and they kind of let you know that on the QT without necessarily saying that they were involved themselves. But, no, David wasn't. You know, that kind of a thing will wind up happening.
The kids are incredibly honest in those situations, believe it or not. They don't throw each other under the bus, and they've been really great about it, surprisingly.
I appreciate the clarification.
Of course.
Now, you said you got a lot of these from other Hockamuck schools. Is the three-day suspension for the smoking and the three-day suspension for having tobacco products, is that common in the other Hockamuck schools?
That I wouldn't be able, that, what's that?
I said, "That varies." Go ahead.
That I wouldn't be able to answer off the top of my head. I think the marijuana's pretty standard in terms of 10 days. Some people are starting to come off of that a little bit, but not many. They still consider that a pretty serious offense. The alcohol, the tobacco, I'd have to look a little more closely to see that and to see what those penalties are.
Mitch?
I picked up something on the front page, and I can't even decide. Well, I'm going to point it out anyways, but you mentioned under the category, "School Safety and Security."
Yep.
You have categories there. You've mentioned "School Resource Officer" and "Searches by School Officials." Down on the bottom, you have "Searches Under School Resource Officer."
Oh, "School Searches."
Well, yeah.
We can clarify that.
Well, you might want, I was just, I was, came across my head that I think police officers are very careful about searches in the high school.
Yes.
Because of reasonable suspicion and probable cause. So, I'm not sure, under the definition of "School Resource Officers," you really want the word "searches." It's just a thought.
Yep.
So, you might want to go right from an investigation to any other initiative and let it be.
Yep.
Because there is, there's, you and I both know there's hard lines between how we search schools.
Absolutely.
Yes. And we've never allowed the school resource officer, obviously, to conduct a search. We take the lead on all of that.
You wouldn't, and he wouldn't.
Yeah.
He or she wouldn't either. So, I'm sure of that, because that's how they operate. So, that's, I think, taken out of there might be wise.
Yeah, the only, we had an incident recently where the officer told me that the only way they would is if there was imminent danger, if they thought there was a weapon.
Right.
So, I mean, there is a...
Absolutely.
But again, I think that could be left in that vague, any other initiatives aimed at protecting...
It's kind of what I'm thinking. I think when you step to that level, or once you have probable cause, or once you have something, then the game changes rapidly, but...
Yep, 100%.
Might be wise to take it out of there.
Absolutely. I'm thinking one way, and I can absolutely see how it's thought of in another way.
That's what I would think. Someone could look at it the other way and say, "No, that's not, you know..."
I did have one more question.
Sure.
Under the glossary area, which I also think is a great idea because I like definitions. And I was looking, I was looking for it, and I didn't realize it says new category. I was like, "Where's the glossary? It's not even here." Are those the only three definitions that are going into the glossary? Or are there other items? Because you've got harassment, bullying, hazing, et cetera.
I would have to take a look to see whatever.
Didn't know.
So, it was a category, obviously, that didn't previously exist.
Right.
And the reason why I created it was because you had in the code of conduct all of that information. It was really just defining it, which I felt convoluted everything within that code of conduct. It made it hard to read the code of conduct and find things in the code of conduct. So, if you looked in the old handbook, I would say that those are the only three things that were applicable to kind of put at the end. So, you know, calling it a glossary of terms maybe could leave it open to adding more in the future.
Yeah.
But it was a place to put that where, where those were things we didn't want to take out, whereas, you know, I took out a whole bunch of other things that involved like school dances, for instance, that I didn't think applied to the student handbook. But those three things kind of stood on their own. Do you know what I mean?
Yes, I do. I was wondering if you would think about including a definition of device because I did see, and this is, I don't see it in what you just handed out, but in the, what was in our packet, there was discussion about it's a felony to record any individual without their consent, and they italicized, you know, when a device is taken from a student. I mean, now, a device could be, you know, a watch. A device could be a phone. There are so many different, you know...
That actually, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off on that.
No, that's okay.
That actually is, it references back to a situation that had happened some number of years ago, and we were directed to put that in as it is.
Yeah.
And it actually has to do with cell phones, and it is directly to cell phones in that particular piece on that one. Yes.
Okay. But it says device, and so now, we, they, we have bring-your-own-device, and a device can, even from several years ago, now, you can record people on so many different things that we allow them to bring to school. And sometimes, they're allowed to record stuff, and sometimes, they're not allowed to record stuff. I think it's a very challenging area of the handbook because it is fluid, as you said, and it has morphed and changed and, you know, can they take pictures at the pep rallies? Can they not take pictures at the pep rallies if my son sends me a picture from school and he didn't ask permission to do it? You know, is that a problem? If I post it on Facebook, is it out of control? I think it's just, it can be a problematic area, and we need to be careful. We're not, you know, overreaching.
Probably, sure. And I'll probably defer to the superintendent on that. We'll have to take a look at that because that was given to us in that exact wording. So, we'll have to take that.
And I think, too, that's probably where we're waiting to hear back on legal counsel on the others, because we don't want to limit to where things change so quickly with technology to your point where, you know, a device could be a watch, or it could be a smartphone. There's, there's so many...
So many things now.
Are we going to have a vote on this tonight?
Well, that's, I was going to ask, do we need a vote on this tonight? I know we put this online, so we're not so much on a deadline for a printer in July to get the actual hard copy handbook out.
We do a few printings, but, or we do a few copies, but we won't do that until August, so we're fine.
So, we could come back to our July 23 meeting, especially where we have a couple of questions that we're still waiting back from legal counsel on, and then by then, have it, because I, too, as far as going through, like you're talking about where Diana, when you look just, for instance, just on the school safety and security, where that's really taking all from different places and just putting under that new heading.
Right.
You've got page nine, page 39, page 50, page 10. It's, it's the same content. It's just reorganized.
Right.
So, at that time, it could serve two purposes. One, to see it in its final form, and two, to have that information back. We could have the vote and then answer any of the questions that might come up.
I would also say that, you know, when you talk about changing policies, a lot of the stuff that was taken out, it didn't change any policy. It was just a matter of, well, did it really need to be in the handbook, or did it need to be as redundant or as extensive as it was in the handbook? So, there weren't any major policy changes, I would say. It was really, I would say, most of the work, as you, as you pointed out, was that reorganization of trying to move things around and put them where they made more sense and made it a little more easy to navigate. As somebody who uses it on a daily basis, it was a cumbersome document that was difficult to use and at times, honestly, useless to me when I was trying to figure out discipline for students. So, that was really the frustration.
And I think that that's the point. One, you're trying to provide the user-friendliness to be able to find the information that's there. Importantly, clarity as far as what are the consequences if someone is looking for that, whether it's tobacco, whether it's e-cigarettes, et cetera. And then, really, the changes that we're looking at on a couple of those is from a detention to a three-day suspension and looking at, based on the epidemic that's taking place, and so that we have, you know, a deterrent there. Exactly.
A significant one.
I think the e-cigarettes, the alcohol, the drugs, that all makes sense to me. But if tobacco's not really a problem anymore, going from a detention to a three-day suspension just seems harsh to me.
Well, using it now in the handbook is a one-day suspension.
Yes, having it, though.
Yeah. Having it is a three-hour, yeah, now.
But the three-hour, too, just to let folks know, is sometimes we say to students, the three-hour is really in lieu of a suspension because, again, we can't force a student to do a three-hour, but the suspension is the one thing, and we really do feel that, and I understand because it does seem like a huge leap, but at the same time, it is something that is illegal. It's health-harmful to students. So, we've got all of those pieces, too, that we're looking at, and we're in a great place where students are not. So, okay, you could say, "Do you keep it as it is?" Because it seems to be maybe doing its due diligence, or do we know, say, "No, this is where we're at." We really do feel like, you know, we're taking a stand that this is something that's detrimental to health on a variety of levels. So, and it's a chemical violation as well on the, on the MIA end of it as well, you know? So, anyway, just food for thought for that.
I did, I'm sorry, I have one more question. The, I do, I think the reorganization is really helpful and makes a lot of sense, the way it's all regrouped. Just to your point, I, I know you said you're going to talk to the kids, and the kids certainly need to know what's what, but I...
Or the parents.
Yeah, I was going to say, you're going to let the parents know that those penalties that, because you don't want, I mean, I know the kids will know, but they won't tell their parents, you know, "Hey, Mom, guess what?" They're just not going to. You're going to find out. The parents have no idea, even though we all sign off on the handbook, but really.
And also, too, when it's, in these instances in particular, because of the suspension pieces to it, that's really a connect that out. That's not what we're doing.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
The Foxworthy, you know, the Foxworthy is like chock-full of a thousand things that are in there, but to really send it out as its own entity of whatever those changes are.
That chunk. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Preventing Bias and Discrimination Program Review with Dr. Burdos, Dr. Mello, and other committee members.
All right.
Sorry for the delay.
Not a problem. So, we have a number of our bias committee with us this evening, so I'm going to ask you if you'll just kind of move a little bit forward. What we wanted to do was to go through and give an overview of what the purpose and the goal that we had as this group. So, we've talked about the curriculum, the six-year curriculum cycle. And for the sixth year, we've termed that kind of our bump year, if you will. It's not math or science or wellness, et cetera. It's identifying an area that we see as a need. And this year, we're in that sixth year of our curriculum cycle, and we had identified the area of bias and discrimination as something to really study and to look at as we're talking about preparing our students for a global world, looking at our, looking at our curriculum
and looking at really how, how do we become a better person in, in this, um, this very large world that's become very small today? So the purpose for the committee itself, just to, to go over that, is that, um, it's to study an area that's not one of our, as I said, one of our major curriculum areas. But really to look at, what are our instructional practices and identify strategies and opportunities for program improvement in supporting and importantly embracing differences? And preventing and minimizing racial, ethnic, cultural, religious, or gender bias and/or discrimination in our students and schools? And our goal was really to look at our own, our policies, our practices, our curriculum, and all of the data that we had available to us to identify opportunities where we can look to improve how we're embracing and celebrating differences, and then also minimizing bias and/or discrimination. So we had a team of many. And part of our team that was able to be here with us this evening, Mike Stanton, as far as being one of our administrators on the committee, Teresa Culver-House, kindergarten teacher, I'm gonna skip over Paulette for just a moment, Holly Gaffers, as far as from the high school, and then Andy Servideo, um, from the high school as well, from the guidance. So we had administrators, teachers, mental health personnel, guidance, et cetera. And we engaged in this year-long study, and we had some overarching questions to guide this work. So what we'd like to do is really kind of go over what those questions were, what our findings, kind of what are, um, some of the strengths that we had, not to mention all of them, because you have a very long report here, but to highlight some of the strengths and need and some recommendations. And then a piece of this, Paulette is one of our fabulous 11th grade students. And she presented her AP, um, English presentation in Ms. Wazalowsky's class. And I had the, um, the wonderful experience of hearing her AP presentation and listening from a student perspective. And I had mentioned this at one of our last school committee meetings, how it really just paralleled the work that we're doing and to hear from a student. So Paulette's going to join us as part of when we get into the curriculum piece, and what she did and her findings as well. So, um, why don't we look at the first, the first overarching question there?
So the first question that we explored were, what are the perceptions of teachers in terms of our current proficiency with bias and discrimination? And in order to collect some data around that question, we created a survey, which we launched to our elementary teachers, our middle school teachers, and our high school teachers. And ironically enough, I don't think we could do this again if we tried, we had the exact same participation rate. We even checked it a couple of times, because it looked so strange, um, a 59%, which, you know, in this spring is actually pretty good. Yeah, we were pretty impressed with that. So some of the strengths that evolved from, uh, that we derived from the results for that, were very consistent across the three levels. And one of the things that we were looking at is, how comfortable are teachers interacting with students from different cultural backgrounds? And of those who participated, we had overwhelming comfort, 95, 95, and 96%. So teachers are very comfortable with interacting with students from different cultural backgrounds. In addition, we looked at some, we had a lot of other things that they are, that came out of strengths. One of which is that teachers are very interested across the board in learning more strategies and having more professional development around this area. So it's an area that people are definitely interested in learning more about, which was great. As far as challenges, we really came down to our curriculum. And what came out most overwhelmingly from the survey was that teachers across the board, 65% at the high school, 61 at middle, and 70% at elementary, don't feel that our current curriculum resources do enough to address areas of diversity. So that was something that we said, okay, that's a real tangible, actionable thing that we can do is look for more resources that address some of these areas that we were looking at. Do you want to say what the areas that we looked at were? So in terms of like physical differences, LGBTQ?
Yes. So i- it is. I think some, some might think it's more gender, um, or, or sexual orientation. But it was also physical differences. And we would see that differ from elementary to middle to high, and how that would change across the board.
And then things that you would think of traditionally, like religion and cultural bias and things like that. So there are, there are many categories that we looked at, some of which are obvious and some of which are not as obvious. And we surveyed on all of them. So from that, we had a recommendation that was pretty obvious that said, well, these are, this is teacher perception data that we collected. We should also collect data from our families and our students, which happened to dovetail perfectly with our K-12 insight survey that we used. So when we get those results, we'll be able to also examine that data. And then as part of the outcome, we also, um, heard from teachers loud and clear that they would love some targeted professional development around strategies, particularly to help with these issues and having discussions in the classroom, but also specifically for our L population, which continues to increase, as we've talked about many times. And those are things that we will talk about later, exactly how we're going to address them.
So our second area was more focused on curriculum. So within our curriculum, how can we leverage opportunities for supporting and embracing differences? And preventing and minimizing all of those things that we have, have said. And we really looked at, um, what are we doing really well? Where are our strengths within our curriculum? And then where are some of those areas that, that we could improve on? And then at the same time, all of the other kind of programs that we have in place. So there are particular courses and programs that address, um, cultural backgrounds more so than other courses. We see that more typically within the humanities areas, or specific courses at the high school level, through our caring school communities, which is across the elementary level, when we're talking about embracing differences. There's a lot of conversation there. That's kind of our tier-one program. We see that at the middle school level, we get more involved with researching global issues within some of the social studies courses and some of the English, as well as at the high, at the high school as well. So we went through and worked with teachers. So all of those on the committee then went back to their buildings, to their grade levels, and said, where, let's identify within our curriculum, where are we making these connections? And then we started to list, and we have a lot listed there from elementary, middle, and high. And that's not all of them by any means, but a lot of different areas. So we could start to see kind of trends and patterns to where it's more prevalent within certain, certain courses.
And we took a deep dive all the way to food service. I mean, it was everything. We want to look at all of the areas where we interact with students, and where are the opportunities that we can better capitalize on?
And there's some of the things that might, um, jump forward in your mind, like our World Cultural Night, that has really grown to where, this year I think we had more than we've ever had. And we've been around 700 people that have been coming and having our students and our families participate. So I think that's a wonderful example of how we're celebrating culture. But it's just one. We do a lot within our world languages, whether it's within music and selections from their repertoire of what they're choosing. But then there's also many other service learning projects that take place at the elementary level. When we look at some of the other clubs and activities at the middle school and high school level, when you've heard some of those through teaching and learning highlights as well. So there's a lot that's taking place, but at the same time, we really wanted to look to what extent does the curriculum really reflect diversity? And where can we make some improvements there? And we've identified some of, some of those places to be able to see, um, what, what's missing? Where are some of those, those gaps?
And I would say that we have done, I think, we're proud of how much work we've done on inclusivity and acceptance. And, um, that's all fantastic, but we would like to back it up with more education about what the differences are so that people can better understand them. So that's, those are some of the specific things. For example, the LSDO is offering some courses. Um, one is on engaging African-American students in the classroom, and another one is teaching culturally diverse students. So now that I've taken Amy's seat on the LSDO, it's my responsibility to make sure that I bring those courses back and get them out to our teachers. And when I did, they were very interested in them, so it's great.
And Holly is the one who is the one teaching that workshop. And so she's not only for our own teachers, but then also for other districts. So talking about having some of our own expertise here, and then really expanding how many people have the opportunity to participate there. So we're always looking for additional resources of how we can expand, um, within those areas. And then at the same time, what are we doing to expand the global citizenship piece? We have that as part of our strategic plan. And so that's where, um, Paulette, I'm going to have you talk a little bit about your AP project and how it relates to the curriculum and some of the findings that we found, and, and what you've, what you have to share as well.
Okay, well, good evening, everyone.
You want, why don't you come up to the guest table, so then that way.
You can have the microphone. You've already presented it once.
Yes.
Yeah.
And Polly, our pro. Polamaris?
Polamaris, yes.
Polamaris. I, I want to make sure I pronounce your last name correctly.
Okay, well, good evening, everyone. Um, my name is Paulette. I'm an junior here at Foxborough, and I did the project with Ms. Waz, where we had to, um, identify a problem and then provide a solution. So the problem that I wanted to kind of focus on was bias, discrimination, bullying, and, um, anything of that sort, and try and diminish it as much as possible. And the solution that I came up with was trying to raise global citizens through implementing global citizenship education into the curriculum. So global citizen is not just a citizen of the country, but of course, of the whole globe. And then global citizenship education sees how you can implement those type of lessons where you look at it worldwide and you implement it into the curriculum. And, uh, I saw a lot of different examples. For example, men in Upton, Mr. Cormier's kids actually are going to go there. And they have a Spanish immersion program where they have their kids totally immersed in a Spanish culture and Spanish language. So then their goal is to become fully bi, well, bilingual by fifth grade with English and Spanish. And so from there, then the kids can decide whether they're gonna keep taking Spanish, or maybe even try a different language. So things like that, where also Oxfam and even UNESCO IV have created their own curriculums on how they can incorporate all that type of stuff. And they have even incorporated in every single aspect arts, math, and then English, of course, history, and things like that. So I focus on the benefits that we would have for the kids. They would be better for employment. They, it would be better for interacting with people, of course, because they understand what cultures are like, what people are like of different cultures. And then in addition, I found a really important one that actually struck me pretty, um, important, was that I have a friend, because I'm Mexican, I was born in Mexico. I moved to Texas, and then I moved to Massachusetts just last year. And so, um, my friend, she's always asking me questions about my culture and what, um, my country does and what my people are like. And I ran into a problem where she said that she had a colleague in her work. He was a janitor, and he's, um, of, of a Latino background. And he would sometimes touch her on the arm, or he would call her Katie Sita, which is very, that only has to do when you have an intimate relationship, or you're, you know them well. So when she told me that, she said that, when she asked one of her other colleagues, which is another girl, who was also, this was also happening to her, she said, it's normal. Latinos are very touchy. That's true, but we understand, especially when we're in a different country, that not all, um, people like to be touched, and especially Americans like their, their own space, which is not bad. It's just what their race do, be like. And so when she told me this, I was very, very, um, worried. Because it's not, he knows that he's doing something wrong. And if my friend hadn't asked me, I wouldn't have told her that he, that he's doing something wrong. So if we educate kids to understand and to really see that thin line of what's right and what's wrong, what's actually someone's culture and what isn't, we can actually protect them in the future. And not only stop there being problems with those type of things, especially with religion, who, which we have talked about, or different cultures, but also having problems with communicating and later, um, kind of just being able to interact, basically. So with that, I also talked about how it helps from multiculturalism, and, um, how it stops unconscious bias, which is actually very malleable, and how kids are not just limited to what they learn in, in home, at home. They're also, um, kind of exposed to their own views. So then what they learn in school, they can kind of, I guess, evolve in their own mindset of what they want to do later. So Foxborough has already done really great things with multicultural night, or, um, with the Spanish courses that I have taken myself, with Singer and Smith and, um, Miss Tim Miss, they really go into education worldwide and talking about, uh, Spanish-speaking countries. And as well, we have, uh, the, the Spanish and French going and traveling out to, um, France and Spain. And that's really great, and we have really been able to kind of show kids that and actually interact. Um, however, Foxborough's always been known to excel and to be great. So if we want to really get our kids to be part of the future, to be innovative, to change, and to be able to actually interact and prepare them for the future, implementing global citizenship education, I thought, would be the best. And we could do this gradually, because of course, it's easy to just say, we're just gonna implement it, right? But it's, it's a lot harder, because teachers already have a lot on their plates. So we would slowly, gradually start implementing a few lessons here and there, until we finally have every department be able to constantly talk about something globally. Or talking about free de calo, or having mathematics talk about a specific mathematician of another country who invented something like that. Anything like that, that even mathematics, you talk about economy and other places. So little things like that, and even maybe expand multicultural night where we, um, interact with other schools. And we kind of mix together, so then it even expands with Spanish Honor Society, and French Honor Society, and Sign Language Honor Society. So things like that, that later start having kids want to be interested in learning more about them, and, um, already having them exposed, so they're prepared to actually interact with people of different cultures.
You are very impressive.
That was detailed.
Thank you.
Can you see why I was so excited, being, sitting there, listening to some of the AP presentations and everything that Paulette was talking about? I'm like, this is exactly, we've talked about how we do a lot of this within different courses and with lessons, and try to bridge that gap as much as we can. But again, to hear from a student's voice, and to, to celebrate what we are doing well, but also recognizing we some, we have some other areas to continue to improve on at the same time.
You know what I just thought of when you were, I was the math science director before I sat in this chair? And with the OECD report, the OECD test we had, we're always looking for authentic problems to solve. And my husband is always talking about global supply chain all the time, because he's in the plastics industry. And thinking about everything that goes into something like your Nike sneaker, and where it's been all over the world, and how it's assembled, and where the materials come from, and how much does that cost? Isn't that an amazing math problem for kids to conquer? And they would learn so much, because most of the kids who get into business now, they have opportunities to travel abroad, because a lot of the manufacturing doesn't happen in this country anymore. So I think you raise a point that's actually so relevant to our strategic plan and our other initiatives. And it's so powerful to hear it from a student. So I was just smiling at you the whole time. I was so impressed.
It really boosted my confidence, if I'm honest.
Oh, good. Glad.
Um, although I want, I want to point this out, because not all kids have my point of view. Um, I have lived in so many places, and, um, I have experienced a lot. I've traveled to Amsterdam, and I've traveled to Sydney, Australia. So I've really been able to actually be hands-on to things like that. However, not everybody has that view. Some kids, um, especially with the way they're raised, or maybe just their own points of view, they're very set on to what they believe and what they think. And I'm not saying that's wrong. It's good to have your own beliefs. But not everybody's going to be as malleable as I am, or as, um, adaptive as I am too.
We have the immersion programs in Brockton where I teach. We have four different ones, and it's, it's a great program. Um, I remember growing up, my cousins went to school in Milton, and they got to learn French.
Yes, I was thinking that.
And by fifth grade, they were fluent, and I was struggling when I started learning in seventh grade. It's so much easier to learn it at a young age.
Right.
So any other before we continue on?
No, no questions?
Thank you so much for sitting through a school committee meeting first. And for being here at nine o'clock at night, and it shows your passion for this. And I think if you continue on this, that you'll be a good catalyst for change, so keep going.
That means a lot.
So proud.
Thank you.
And don't feel like you have to stay.
Yeah, if you have, if you have tests, finals tomorrow.
So the next question. Good night. Thank you so much. Yeah, not everybody gets to attend these AP presentations, and we're fortunate to be invited. But that actually is a great segue into our next question, because one of the things that we thought about as a committee was, how do we make, um, embracing differences and celebrating, um, all of these, all the diversity that we have? How do we make it visible in Foxborough? So that was one of our questions. How do we put visibility to embracing differences, preventing and minimizing, as she mentioned, race Nick, uh, racial, ethnic, cultural, religious, and/or gender bias and discrimination in our students and our schools? And how do faculty and staff support this important topic? So one of the strengths we saw is that we actually now have more diversity in Foxborough. We see that as a strength. We actually are, are being more representative of what kids will encounter in the world. And that wasn't always the case. And as we've said, our L population has continued to grow. As we mentioned, we have some cool clubs and activities, and we have our World Culture Night, and we have teachers who are really on board with learning more. But one of the challenges that we identified is that as much as our, our student population is becoming more diverse, our staff and our teachers are not. And we have brainstormed with Jacinda Castro, our Met co-director. She's been an unbelievable resource for us, and we've had meetings with her about how we can attract more people um, so that we can have a, a staff that better matches the population of our students. And she shared some resources with us to advertise for positions, not just on School Spring or on our website, but to get out into other areas. So that's one of the things that we'll be able to explore.
And that's a problem across the state, not just in Foxborough.
Correct. Yes, absolutely. Thank you for saying that. And I think, Teresa, did you bring the posters?
Did.
Would you like to come up to the table, so, and would you like to talk a little bit about them?
Oh, sure. Um, so these are two different posters, um, that one of our fellow committee members, um, brought back from a professional development opportunity. And this one says, this is the scoop, diversity is the one true thing we all have in common, embrace diversity. And then this one says, celebrating diversity is at the heart of peace in the world. So these are just two great examples of, um, actually student-created, um, diversity posters that could be posted around schools, just to keep, um, keep it in the forefront of everyone's mind about accepting one another, and just reminding us, um, how to be, um, how to celebrate everyone's diversity.
And that differences actually can bring us all together, because we can learn things. If we were all the same, it would be boring. So we had talked about maybe, um, taking advantage of our fabulous art department, and having our students work on a similar. and having our students work on a similar project like that. So that was another one of the recommendations. And then talking about our motto, as you might recall from our school safety presentation, we talked about our see something, say something, and that's like a quick, easy motto that people can have. And as we started to work through this topic, we came up with our motto of stop it, name it, claim it. And we really want everybody to know that so that if there is something that we don't want to see, if somebody is being discriminated against or if there is bias being shown, we want to stop it. We want to say what it is and then we want to own it and then we want to work towards correcting it. Um, you want to add to anything there? And as you heard before from Diana and from Sue Abrams and from their team, the, the Link Crew and the Web Project from the Boomerang Project, those are both initiatives that are aimed at accepting each other's differences and working together and embracing each other. So we were really excited that, um, we can have that as a tier-one intervention. And we're really trying to take advantage from all of the resources that are at tolerance.org. There's a really, there's a plethora of wonderful things there. So we think all of those things will make this issue more visible and it will really help us to, um, be sure that everyone, it's in the forefront of everyone's mind, as Teresa said.
We also looked at our policies and procedures to see how they really align to what they needed to as far as, um, responding to any incidents that might occur of discrimination. And what we found was that we have some very comprehensive district policies. So we, we really saw that as a, as a strength. Um, when you look even at our bullying policy, it's many, many, many pages long, all of the other district policies. So we felt really good about all of the policies that were, were there, that they were very comprehensive, um, resources that are there, um, that need to be in place for, um, you know, a, a, any victims if there, if there were and, and what can we provide as, as far as resources. So we felt really good about that area.
What we thought we needed to do a little bit more was with some supports for aggressors. And you've heard a little bit tonight about restorative practices and restorative justice. That's something that we're interested in learning more about so that it helps people who have committed the offense understand why it was wrong and under, and sort of educate them so that it won't happen again. So that's something that we are interested in as well. Um, and then the last, I think it's the last. The last question that we explored is what professional development is needed in the area of diversity training? So anytime we go through a curriculum review, we have outcomes that usually present us with a need for professional development. And we were fortunate enough that we've already been able to schedule professional development for this August. It will be district-wide. All of our K through 12 people will participate in it. And because of the work of this group, we are able to tailor it to exactly what the teachers have said they need. Specific strategies. They'd like to role-play certain situations. If a topic comes up in class, that's not as comfortable. How do they do that if, whether it's a religious bias or an ethnic bias, an ethnic bias? How do they tackle that, especially in these challenging times? They really want strategies for that. So, um, we're really excited that the teachers are eager for it and that we're able so quickly as an outcome of this to, um, work in conjunction with our Metco Director. Again, she has given us some great leads on who our speaker can be and what that day will look like in August. Yeah, it's a really, it's a long report and it's late. We could say a lot more because there's a lot of bullets in here, but I think we got the, we got the.
And I'm just, I'm curious for some of the committee members, just thinking about the process that we went through during the course of the year. Any of your takeaways or comments from the work that we engaged in? If there's anybody that wanted to share anything.
Or anything really important that we didn't articulate here well.
I think you covered it well. Yeah, I think kind of what you both said, that some of the things that we found in doing the survey and looking at the different areas is that we are doing a lot of things that we're proud of, things that we can say we're doing well. But to echo what Paulette said, since we're a district that's committed to going from good to great instead of settling at good, um, we did identify some areas and, um, some of that is going to be by way of, um, providing the opportunity to incorporate more of, um, global awareness, more training that is specific to, um, how to intervene when the need comes up or how to help students become more appreciative of one another's differences.
I, I, uh, this is just a great, the report, I read the whole report and, you know, it's certainly, um, very detailed and definitely a, a huge compendium of work that you all did. I wonder if, um, moving, I mean, this was great for the sixth year, uh, sixth year of the curriculum cycle. I wonder if moving forward, we might want to consider having a, a, you know, Bias and Discrimination Committee, kind of like the Wellness Committee, to keep some of the people who have been, um, focusing on this and maybe pull in students like Paulette. Like we have, you know, we, um, our Wellness Committee said how helpful it was to have a student. Maybe pull in a couple of parent representatives from different, um, areas. Maybe Jacenia could, um, you know, if we could have a parent who has a student in the Metco program or, you know, and other parents in the community. I, I just think that you've done all this great work and it would be great to continue, maybe not at this depth of the curriculum review depth, but generally as an overview, um, like our Wellness Committee does. Just how are we doing? Is what, are there any, any things that we need to address, you know, as going forward?
It's a really interesting idea. We looked at some articles as a committee and it was very eye-opening, um, about cultural traditions that some parents hold or families hold that we're not aware of, that you may miss. Like she was saying, that you may misinterpret somebody's, something that they do. So I think there could be a lot of benefit in something like that.
Some, just a thought, but.
No, I think it's, and I think it's a really good one too because we talked about in the beginning here that we needed to get more information. We, we, we went through the K-12 Insight, but where we surveyed teachers.
Mm-hmm.
K-12 Insight is that one piece, but at the same time, how can we make things more visible? Whether it's a panel discussion, what, what are some other things that we can do?
Right, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Rich. I, I, I think it's a great suggestion. I thought the same thing. I think changing diversity and awareness to diversity in communities like ours has to be purposeful. It, it, it just, you just can't back into it and we just can't keep surveying. It's got to be purposeful and focused with intent. And that, that type of committee might maintain that, that.
Would make them a personal.
Yeah, I think so. I suspect so too. I suspect so. And I was also going to say, um, I, I, um, I like the professional development logs to help support the teachers.
Yes.
Um, I, I, I think it's crystal clear that the struggles the teachers have is that moment in, in a situation in front of kids and they, and, and there's a hesitancy of what to do and how to do it correctly. And I don't think any teacher wants to feel that because they think they want to intervene.
That's right.
Purpos, I just said purposely, but they want to intervene with that way.
Yes.
And so I think that's great training and I, I would suspect the teachers will probably very much appreciate it. Because it puts them in a good spot when they're in command.
That's right. That's all they want. They want to be prepared and equipped.
Yeah, I would think so.
Yeah.
Anything else from the committee?
Bless you all for standing so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think just one thing is we, we were talking the first hour, we just wanted to make sure that, even though, quick glance, Foxborough has so many great things, we want to make sure that every person felt comfortable, whether it's students, staff. And to realize that we're all different. You know, there's a lot of similarities between us, but we're all different and that's not bad. And be able to celebrate how we're all different and that we're all Foxborough, whether in elementary school, middle school, high school, we're all kind of, we want to row in the same direction. We're on the same team. Just find out ways to, to celebrate how we're, we're all so different and how we're all so similar.
We've kind of talked a lot about replacing that word. We're not trying to learn to tolerate one another as much as to celebrate.
And embrace people.
Yeah.
I would just say anecdotally that I, it was my first time sitting in the front row for graduation and awards night. And I was just so impressed with how our student body, our seniors, how much they seemed really, um, really close to each other and how much they embraced each other and how much they were happy for each other when they won the awards. And I went to my own daughter's, my girl, my girl's graduating high school and I could see that it just wasn't, it just wasn't the same. So it really made me appreciate it even more. So I think it's, a lot of us really are, this, some of you on this committee are just so passionate about it and lead by example and that's infectious. So keep doing that. It's great work that you all do.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you all for coming. Thanks for your work, for staying.
Up next, we have the 2017 through 2020 Strategic Plan Report on Progress by Dr. Burdos.
And Dr. Mello as well. Should've said Dr. Mello.
And Dr. Mello.
So I think one of the, one of the good news pieces here is so much of the strategic plan we've talked about all year. So I think that in the interest of time and so much that you've heard already tonight, there's so many connections that we can just reference that's here, um, as far as the strategic plan. So this is the first year of our three-year plan. And to look at the first objective, which is really going back to develop responsible global citizens, um, to provide them dynamic learning experiences within a rigorous curriculum that fosters high levels of achievement for all students. We had three main goals there and a number of strategies. So what I'd like to do is, is highlight, when we think about the first goal, which is to improve academic achievement for all students. We talk a lot about academic achievement here. Our Baseline and Benchmarks Report back in the fall, the OECD testing for schools, looking at, um, the results there and what we're doing with that. One of the things that you've heard about and have seen here was Illuminate, which is our new assessment platform here. We've spent a lot more time, I know Alison can kind of touch upon that a little bit more.
So one of, the Illuminate platform coming on board is really giving us a chance to identify exactly where students have needs, where they have strengths, so that we can intervene quickly and that we can maximize our small group instruction to have actionable data. So we're really excited about what that will mean for student achievement and what it will mean for students' confidence because if they're not struggling there for a while, we can get to them more quickly. Um, we've also focused on increasing our opportunities for STEM opportunities. We have a very highly visible Grade Six STEM Day. We've talked about it before. It's modeled after the thing that we did at WEIN. We have engineering tasks happening, uh, in grades K through eight. I met with kindergarten teachers this morning and they were raving about their engineering experiences that they had with their students this year and how much they get out of them and how engaging they are for students. Um, and if you look at the, the third, uh, number there, providing curricular opportunities in programs that inspire global awareness, that connects right back to everything that you just heard. So I'm excited. I, I felt like when we were looking at this in parent committee, I'm like, yeah, we're actually doing so much of this already in year one. Let's roll them right along.
And, and I think that that really too is a testament of, this is a living document and we're constantly looking at it to see where are we?
Yeah.
And where do we need to go from there? And so some of the things that are in progress are ongoing. Each year within reporting out on this plan, we'll be able to give different examples. So, you know, one of the examples that we had, here's a teaching and learning highlight, was the work with Ukraine through, um, Kelly Arkatcha in the art department. You know, just those connections. So they're looking within our units of study, where can we make these global connections of where it makes sense with what we're doing? So that's why it notes there that we've, we've made progress in this area, but more work is needed. And we will continue to work there.
And I would say that one important thing that I've realized in the last year is that we are really expanding our view of student achievement. And it's not just about the numbers, but it's also about their social-emotional growth and their social-emotional readiness. So we have sent more people to the next level of thinkage training so that we can really push that initiative forward. And we know that that impacts learning. So it really all goes together.
And on the other side too, when we think about even like at the elementary level, the three drama productions that we had this year to have all three schools, Schoolhouse Rock, the Madagascar and, um, the Hundred and One Dalmatians are a little bit earlier in the year. That right there is just hitting so many different areas when we think about not just the academics to the social-emotional learning and so many things that, that are hard to measure. But when you see the performance, that's a great measure of their work.
And I keep realizing now that I'm in this role, how everything is connected. So we have our social-emotional committee that did their, their results. We did the bias discrimination. We have the technology plan. So also under this section is how we continue to support blended learning and you heard about that tonight. So everything is very intentional. Um, Sue Forrest mentioned some of the professional development that we will have in August around blended learning. We actually have Catlin Tucker, who's an expert in that field, coming from California. She wrote a book, I believe it's called Blended, on blended learning. And she has intimate knowledge of how to implement StudySync. So, um, we're making great progress on this objective, I think.
Any questions on the first objective?
We know so much of this, you've heard before. It's a little bit redundant.
So the second objective within the plan is to continue to strengthen school culture, ensuring that students, staff, parents and all stakeholders feel valued, safe and have a voice. So when we look at the first goal there, that really is continuing to collect and analyze the culture and climate survey data through K-12 Insight. That survey just closed recently. We're waiting on that to come back. We'll present in the fall on looking at that data from the last six years. And we added some questions this year, which I think has helped our participation rate as we can watch and see the reminders going out. So we're really looking forward to getting that information back and analyzing that data and sharing it with, with the committee here and then with all of our, with all of our staff. Again, the continuing to monitor and evaluate our students' social-emotional needs through Guidance and Mental Health Services. This is an area where so much has been done this year. Coming out of the recommendations from that SEL review, just the increased communication between all of our mental health staff with our teachers and constantly, you know, the, the example of the balloon was given before from Karen and not letting anyone fall. So that constant communication and putting in safeguards for that. We've had a lot more through, um, collaboration time, through grade level time, to be able to make sure that we're meeting needs there. And then, you know, we had two, two student deaths this year. And so the amount of work with our mental health staff and our guidance and really to have those protocols, um, in place and the resources that are available, we've done a lot there. So our, our mental health staff is wonderful and the teachers and, and everyone working together there. I think that that's the social-emotional health of all of our students and making sure that we're there to support all of them, um, when, when tragedies do occur and then when it's just, you know, regular school, um, day to, day to day. So I think that, you know, that, that is a, a goal that is very much at the forefront of our minds in so many different areas.
Well, and in, in thinking about all stakeholders and parents included, and thinking about what we heard about the handbook and the epidemic that we're seeing, one of the things that we had this year with the Safe Coalition was the in-plane site presentation for parents about, um, drug awareness and looking for things that might be in a child's room that might seem totally benign and helping you understand, uh, what signs you should be looking for.
Any questions on objective two?
So objective three, you have heard a lot about this year. This is the objective where we're trying to enhance our district infrastructure and tech capabilities to provide increasingly safe and supportive physical and innovative academic social environment. So obviously, we've talked a lot about hardening our access, uh, to our school buildings and we've had the safety presentations by the chief. And we're adding another school resource officer. You've heard a lot about the construction of the eight-lane track, the bleachers and the press box beginning in late summer. And we have a big thank you to all the residents of the town of Foxborough. At the May 14th, uh, town meeting, the Warren Oracle was passed. So the construction of the eight-lane track, the bleachers and the press box are scheduled to begin in late summer to complete our campus. There's other things going on there too, if you want to speak about them.
I, I just think overall, the relationship that we have with our public safety, we are so lucky in this town that we, we meet weekly. We have the access to them whenever we need them. We're true partners. Um, having the support from the town for the second school resource officer, that's, that's in the works now, so that'll be coming out soon. Um, to be able to where we currently share a school resource officer with the charter school and then all of our schools, so add a second. That's, you know, doubling, um, the efforts there. But again, it's just having that ongoing relationship and that communication back and forth to do what we can to, to keep all of our students and staff safe.
And in terms of an innovative academic school environment, everything that we're doing with our technology plan and our new pedagogical models that we're using and then even the Borough School Project and all the work that's gone into creating that space as an innovative space are projects that are ongoing.
And then the last objective, to maintain strong supportive public education within the town of Foxborough. We couldn't be more fortunate. We have such a supportive community and it's shown year after year. I think that the transparency and the work that we do and you do as a committee here and that we do as, as a, um, school district, the trust is there and that the support that has come from that i- is really, um, it, I, I, I don't know of other towns that, that are as supportive from when I talk with colleagues and what they're facing. And we're just, we're very fortunate to have, whether it's the advisory committee or the Board of Selectmen or the, or the town administration and all of the support working with us in the best interest of students.
And we need, we, we will continue to use our platforms on social media and all of our outreach. And I remember the first time we had the, one of the bullets is the intergenerational connections and the bus to the future and things like that that are unique to our community and that really let people know what's happening in our school are so important. And bringing people in, you know, guests from our community for things like Career Day and the STEM Day and the Grade Seven Experience, where we have kids out in the community really broadening that for people. Any questions about that one?
No, but I think that, uh, several of our items tonight just really have dovetailed quite nicely. From the Link Crew to the Bias and Discrimination and the Wellness Committee Report and the Strategic Plan Report. I think we're really working as a, as a whole, I mean, the system together. I think we're really working as a whole, I mean, the system together. And it all does come back to the strategic plan and meeting those goals.
Absolutely.
It's just a great, great effort on the part of the strategic planning committee.
Yes.
Thank you.
It was a good night for a new guy because it was like weaving together.
You had a lot of information to take then.
Other than the six-year plan that I missed, but everything else is coming together.
You got it now, there you go.
Moving on to the superintendent's evaluation, the continued discussion.
So, this was really, if you had additional questions, I know you're each making individual appointments with me to come and discuss any questions that you might have individually. I provided you a lot of information at the last meeting that went on for a little bit longer than what we anticipated. So, hopefully, I didn't inundate you with too much information. But at this point, are there any other questions or any other information that you need me to provide you?
I don't have any.
Oh, I'm good.
I do not either.
And we both have our meetings set up.
Yep, I'm all set.
Okay.
And Bevy wants our evaluations to her by July 9.
July 9 too.
Yep. We'll be on it.
I look forward to my individual meetings with you.
As do we.
All right, moving on. Service and maintenance bids with Mr. Bill Yucna.
Okay, so, we changed this a few years ago from an annual to a three-year process. Basically, the advantage to the community and the school department is that we get vendors that are knowledgeable of our facilities and, you know, are able to work with them for a longer period of time. We do do the bids on a one-year and a three-year so that it gives us an option, but we've been finding that the three-year bid has been very consistent better. So, the first bid you already did was the buses. These are the next five that are really our service bids. All of these service bids also are implemented for across the town. So, when we, as an example, in the first one with the elevators, we're not just bidding, the school elevators are bidding, public safety, library, and so on, to make it advantageous for them as well. There were, in all cases except for the electrical, there were multiple bidders. The electrical, the current supplier is the only one bidding, but their pricing stayed right in line with where they had been, so we're very fortunate with that. And, you know, again, very minor incremental increases between years one and three, so we're comfortable with the five that we're recommending. What I do need is a vote accepting each of the individual ones for the three-year term and then obviously they go into place from there.
Should we do it individually?
It's probably the best way, just so that there's no question.
Anyone have any questions first?
So, are these school committee bids? I read it, so I get it. So, is it actually, does the town also approve it as well too?
No, the school committee, because we're actually doing the RFPs themselves and I am the one of the purchasing agents for the town.
Yep.
There's only a couple of us. And so, I can do it for the town side as well. And then they just adopt it and accept them themselves.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion for the elevator?
Move to approve the bid of Embry Elevator for the elevator service contract?
For three years.
For three years.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Three zero.
I'll move fire alarm service for three years to home electronic life protection. Help.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Three zero.
Your turn.
I will move to approve the oil, gas burner service contract for three years to Commercial Boiler Systems, Inc.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Three zero.
I'll move Commercial Boiler Systems for the HVAC service for three years.
I will second that.
All those in favor? Three zero.
And I will move to approve Anderson Electrical Contractors for the electrical service contract for three years.
Do we have a second?
I'm a second.
All those in favor? Three zero.
Rich, you got to load up on your motions tonight.
Yeah, I did. I got into the motion world now. I was looking at the minutes, like, I gotta get moving.
Moving on to fiscal year 2018 budget update with Mr. Bill Yucna.
So, as you know, this is the last meeting before we get to the end of the year. So, we've kind of already done a review, haven't really done the final cleanup through all the budget accounts. But what we do know is that we are running better in our payrolls, some of which you've already seen, which dealt with replacements that we had gotten from retirements. Some of it is that we're not using some of the money in different contract areas that, you know, basically, we have to have the money available for teachers or for different processes. It's not getting fully used this year, so we're able to repurpose that money. And then, one of the biggest differences is that we're not fully utilizing our out-of-district tuitions for the SPED program. That is not because we didn't have the need, it's because things changed with a few students. One case, a student came back in, obviously, so we serviced him through our programs internally. And then, we did have a couple of children that had issues that took them out of the out-of-district placements for a period of time, which obviously reduces our costs as well until they're able to go back into them. So, a number of changes, it can happen, but, you know, not always that distinct as this time. And the other big area is in our facilities. We try to use when we can any kind of money that we have to make sure that we take our facilities and keep them as safe and efficient as possible. We had a big savings this year because of the solar power coming online, gave us some rebates. The agreement we had with the town was we would do even more, you know, efficiency model things, so a lot of LED lighting went in. One of the last big things I talked to you about last time was if we had the money, which we do have, is to take advantage of that state program that would allow us to change the boiler out of the tailor. What I'm looking for is about $80,000 on that program. We expect to get about $25,000 in rebates from Columbia National Grid. And that would bring us to all four buildings having, without the Borough, which obviously is another whole program, but all of them having basically energy-efficient and up-to-date systems. The one at the tailor is a 1968 boiler, our dual 1968 boilers. And really, you know, the same concern we have with the Borough's older boilers we have had with the tailor. So, we've been able to do other things at the tailor as far as, you know, maintaining it and do things. This would be the last thing that would get us to at least be able to make it to whatever, you know, timeframe it does take to get to that project as a renovation too. And so, again, I think it's a very important one we make. There are a number of other little things we're doing. There was a safety issue over at the IGO school where the softball field is, where everybody sits. There's like partitioned walls that hold up where the crowd part of it is. They're all very badly deteriorated. So, we're working with putting some money in ourselves. DPW is putting some money in, recreation's putting some money in, and we're going to rebuild that so that it becomes a safer environment. Obviously, the kids do use it for JV softball and other sports that way. It's not ours per se, it's an area that's jointly used, so everybody kind of putting into that makes a lot of sense. And we, you know, a couple other, you know, minor things as far as upgrades within the buildings. We obviously always look at the very end here for some technology changes if we need to make some additional ones. So, I know one of our biggest concerns has been that a lot of our interactive whiteboards are original vintage that we put in a number of years ago. They're not as bright as the newer ones are. The bulbs in them alone cost almost as much as, you know, half of the cost of the projector if you can get them. So, we will also look to do a few of those upgrades, try to replace a few of those out this year with a few of the extra. I still anticipate we're going to give back a fairly large number back to the town, you know, based on this. But it, again, I think is effective on doing it on our side where we're going to take care of our issues and then turn them back over to the rest of the town.
Do you have a motion tonight on anything?
A motion to approve the budget summary as presented, if possible.
Your turn.
My motion to approve the budget summary from 6/18/2018 as presented.
I will second that motion.
All those in favor? Three zero.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
And now, moving to acceptance of donations from the Foxborough High School Athletics, or to the Foxborough High School Athletics.
So, Bill, you want to talk about this one?
Yeah, we were really.
Right?
It was a nice one. A group had gotten together apparently a while ago. Their main function was to support the athletic program for the high school called the Friends of Foxborough Sports, Inc. Mr. Stopa has been their representative in this and their main purpose basically had been served already and they still had some funds that they had collected in their donations and fundraising process. So, they reached out and basically they want to kind of close down the organization itself but turn the funds over to the schools. So, Rich and I had conversations with them. Basically, they're going to, their donation is for $16,653.87. As you can see in their letter, they have basically given $5,000 to the athletic director as unrestricted to use in any way he sees fit to improve the programs. And then, they've also dedicated $11,653.87 to specific areas. And in this case, they're basically looking for girls' basketball, girls' volleyball, girls' track, and girls' tennis teams to be supplemented on this side. So, it's a great donation and, you know.
Excellent.
Do they say why they chose those sports particularly or is it?
No, I think they see those as underserved areas and obviously, if you look at some of them, you know, girls' tennis is hard to have a big boosters group for and things like that. So, this is a way to support those organizations as well.
Charitable.
Can I, does unrestricted cause any challenge for you at all? I'm not implying anything. Sometimes it gets too broad, right? So, does that mean?
It still has to be approved by me.
Well, I understand. Well, actually, so I, no, I get that part of it. But I guess what I'm saying is does unrestricted mean he can go anywhere with it? He's not going to have to offset something that we're responsible for?
No. No. What you'll see typically is, and we've kind of had this as a rule within the thing, that any of these boosters organizations or gifts that are given are basically to be the extras that we as a district cannot, you know, put within our budget in good faith and say that we want this money every year. And that's, and I think all of the coaches, the ADs, the music programs, all those have done very well with understanding that those monies are really things that they could get that one-time thing for or the added benefit. But anything that goes through this all has to come through the approval of us.
Yep.
So, you know, whatever he decides that he's going to use it for, which may be multiple things, you know, just a need that came up that they just had no eyesight on, it still would end up going through the purchasing process on our side that has to have the sign of us.
Well, that's good for me, but I appreciate that too because I don't think these donations should be used to, for us to shirk our responsibilities as a school committee.
We've made that very clear to PPOs as an example.
Yeah, very much.
They're not there to buy our books, they're not there to buy our things. Those are our problems. But if there's something, a special trip that they'd like to send the kids on or something like that, that's.
That's what this is for.
A competition, something.
Thank you, that helps me. Thank you very much.
Do we have a motion?
I'll move to accept the donation from the Friends of Foxborough Sports in the amount of $16,653.87 with gratitude.
I will second that.
All those in favor? Three zero. Moving on to other matters. Do you want to start with you today, Dr. Mall?
Really? I'm not ready.
All right, we'll get back to you.
Thank you. I need a moment to collect my thoughts.
Dr. Burdo's?
Well, Friday's our last day of school and a lot of people are really excited at the same time as they're trying to finish up everything they can in the last week. So, I just, I want to take a minute to thank all of our staff, our students, our parents. I think that we've had a really great year. A lot has been accomplished this year. I hope that everyone has a wonderful summer and restful summer and a safe summer, so when they do return back to us in the fall, we're ready to go. And they have great memories to talk about from their summer and they have time to spend it with family and friends. So, again, a safe, restful, well-deserved summer for all. Great.
Okay.
I got to go to the Special Olympics last week and Joe was there and he did an outstanding job in his leadership role and I was very impressed and I took a picture and put it on Twitter. Joe, you had a good time?
Yeah, so what my role was is, I'll tell you a little bit what my role was that day. So, my role that day was.
Can you introduce yourself?
My name is Joe Garrity. I'm a student, a post-12 student of Foxborough High School. And my role that day was a peer buddy, role model mentor for some of the young athletes and competitors. And so, what my, because when it got moved to the rain date, some, the fourth graders couldn't go because of their end-of-the-year field trip, so I was a peer buddy for everyone that competed at the Special Olympics.
That's amazing.
So, to start off the day, I was with the first grade doing the young athletes ceremony. And then, for the majority of the day, I was with third-grade students doing, making sure they got to their 50-meter dash and their softball throw successfully.
Yes, you did a great job and they even, someone shared their medals with you, I remember.
I remember one student put his medal on, the other medal he got, he put it around me with a cute picture.
Yes, I got that picture, Joe. And then, in addition to the Special Olympics, which is a great event, we have the Ahern Moving Up Day, which is this Friday. And last week was the IGO school had their fourth grade move-up day, which was a really special day and a special tribute. So, these are all fun things that I didn't necessarily get to participate in. Ahern, I did, but, so it's all new to me and they've been great. Thanks for giving me a moment to collect my thoughts.
Tina?
I have two things. The Ahern School is doing their Warrior Walk. They did it today and tomorrow. And the last update I saw on the Ahern PAC Facebook page, they had raised over $12,000 of their $15,000 goal. And I think Mr. G's class was in the lead on the amount, but they're raising money for progeria research, which is, you know, very near and dear to all of our hearts. That's my one thing. And my second thing is, the starfish story has stayed up the whole, throughout the whole meeting. And I was reflecting, I didn't want to drag out the presentation before, but it's, the starfish story is one that was told at Joe Heinricher's funeral. And the connecting that piece of the link crew with Joe's legacy and his memory, I think is really appropriate and wonderful and special. And I love the story anyway, but, yeah, I've just been reflecting on that throughout the meeting. So, those were my two things.
They got their inspiration for the progeria walk from the Heinricher Hustle. They said that at the PAC meeting in May, I think it was.
It really is great.
They wanted to do something special for their own school. Rich?
I was, eighth grade graduation is this Friday, I believe, right? So, good luck to them. I am, unfortunately, I can't go because I have a banquet at my office for baseball state finals. So, I'm kind of trapped, but good luck to the eighth graders for their graduation.
Bill?
I'm good.
Janet?
I just noticed that the last sheet in the pack it is your meetings for next year.
Yes.
I forgot to mention the bubble 50 too. That was a great celebration.
That was great.
As we look ahead to our new building, celebrate 50 years of the world.
The only thing I have was that Dr. Burdo's helped organize getting the senior walk put onto the school website. So, any parents that want to see that, I know a bunch have really loved it so far, but any parent that hasn't had an option to see it yet can view it on the Foxborough Public Schools webpage.
I'm glad you mentioned that and to thank our three technology integration specialists, Darlene Reed, Julie Greenstein, and Diane Ambrosio, who were in the three different locations and then Dan, who put it all together.
Put it all together.
And all the principals for their coordination of that because that was, it was not easy, but it was worth it.
And everybody had their caps. Everybody was worried they'd lose their caps and their tassels and everybody seemed to have them at graduation. I appreciated the senior walk video because I had seen a video that someone took at the Borough and I had seen a video that someone took at the IGO teacher parent.
You hit a tailor.
But I had not seen one of the Taylor School, which is where my graduate attended. So, I was very happy to see the entire one up on the school website. So, that's great, yeah. And I know a lot of people really did, as Chris said, really, really enjoyed it. Hey, there was one more thing that actually I was going to ask you. You sent us the email on the MIAA honor for Sarah Bain. Could you speak a little bit about that as one of our alumni, what the honor that she's getting?
Sure, yeah. So, the, there's our second Legends Night, or the MIA's Second Legends Night, and they've
Night, and they've picked high school legends from across the state to honor. And Sarah Bain's being recognized at this one coming up, actually Monday night.
Yeah.
Monday night, yes, Monday night and it happens to be up at Gillette Stadium. There's, you could go to the MIA website and find out and click on Legends Night, but there's six other people and off the top of my head, I'm looking, I remember them all. I know Jerry Remmy's going to be there, Sarah Bain and a bunch of others and I'm drawing a blank.
Sarah was the only one I remember.
Yeah, and some of them, you know, not everyone knows, but they're all, the goal of it was, Jerry's a special, Jerry Remmy's a special one. The goal of it was to find the high school people from Massachusetts that had spent their time as high school athletes and then advanced their career somewhere else. And then there's also going to, there should be a nice opportunity where Jackie, I think it's Jackie McMullin and Steve Burton are going to emcee some question and answer with them. We did it two years ago and it was a great question and answer to the athletes and they talked about the value of athletics and staying involved in athletics and not over-specializing. And it was from the great athletes that said it all, they kind of sold the whole concept of just experience and enjoy athletics, so maybe the same thing will happen.
Congratulations to Sarah.
Congratulations to Sarah, Monday night at Gillette Stadium.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I want to take a motion to adjourn.
That's my turn, right? I moved to adjourn the meeting.
I will second that motion.
All those in favor? Three zero.
Thank you.